Good evening, welcome to the Millbrae City Council. Roll call, please.
All council members present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two ceremonial presentations. First is the proclamation proclaiming the week of October 7th through the 13th as Fire Prevention Week. Chief, you want to join me up here, because we get autographs signed on the last of it? City of Millbrae proclamation, whereas the city of Millbrae is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living in and visiting Millbrae, and the U.S. fire departments respond to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing eighty, seventy-eight percent of all U.S. fire deaths. And whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from their, from the time the smoke alarm goes off. And home fires escape, and home, excuse me, and a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. A home fire escape plan indicates two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside for each exit, smoke alarms in all the required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household and practiced twice a year, and first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Month theme is "Look, Listen, Learn: Beware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere," promotes the three steps in staying alert for potential fire hazard, from potential fire hazards around your home. Now, we, now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Fire Prevention Month. Would you like to add anything to?
I think you said it all, Madam Mayor. Look, listen, and learn is the message. Look for where, look for where fires can start, listen for the smoke detector, and learn two ways out, and I think you covered that all for us very well. Thank you.
I probably should take a picture. It's important to promote this. Our next item is a presentation by the Peninsula Healthcare District. Our very own Cheryl Fema, CEO of the Peninsula Healthcare District. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate getting some time on your busy agenda, Mayor Pappin, council members, city manager. I'm hoping today to inform, ignite, and invite. And I'm going to, I have a presentation, but I'm going to flip it upside down. I want to inform, and my slides, and I know that you had them in your packet, give you a lot of information. No way I can do all of that information justice in the few minutes I want to take of your agenda, but I will touch on some of that. I want to ignite, because I want you, I want to help to get the word out to your, all of our constituents, that it's our 70th anniversary, ours, the district. We are two months older than the city, and feeling every bit of it. I want to invite, I want to ignite, because I want, when I'm done rattling off a few things, to have you folks go home and say, "I didn't know they did that. I didn't know what they were doing." And I want to invite, and I'm going to start with the invite, and I'm going to hand out, I'm going to hold up a bunch of things, hoping that if you're interested, that you will either grab some tonight before you go, or you'll contact the district. The first, what I have, 25 copies of the slide presentation, for anyone that wants it. I have a very important document that I'm not going to go into in detail, but this is a list of gaps just in the last eight years. You're going to hear us say, "We look for gaps in healthcare needs and services." And this gives you a sampling, over and above our grants, over and above the things that people tend to know. So that's an important document. We really are trying to sign people up. We want your email address. This is how we send out our monthly e-newsletter. This is how we get all of our information out. And we do one-month surveys, six questions. The data comes in, and it's exciting program, because you all see what we see. It lasts for 48 hours, and then every participant seems, sees the same results. We use it, and it helps to inform where we go. So that, that is our email. We've got flash vote, take that, that's the survey information. And then I'm going to get to the invite. We have two events coming up that I want to let you know about. On October 10th, there will be an open house, and it's going to be in the paper very soon, an open house for the Truesdale Wellness Center, which is the fitness and educational program that we have launched at 1875 Truesdale, which is at the corner of Marco Polo. I've got the flyer here with more information. You can go on the website. We'd love to have folks come by and see it. I'd like you to know that already about 20% of our members are Millbrae residents. And then I also want to invite you to, save the date, and I, of course, I have too many papers, I can't find it, December 5th. I want you all to mark down, December 5th, it's a Wednesday. Four o'clock will be reception, five o'clock will, the program will start. It won't go much beyond six, and then it will end with more networking. And as, it's to commemorate our 70th anniversary, but we're going to have a keynote speaker. And I don't know how many of you listen to podcasts, but Hidden Brains host Shankur Vandanta is our guest speaker. Talked to him today, he sounds delightful, and he, I listen to him all the time, so that's my invite. So, let me, see if I can move this forward here. Let me now inform. So, what the heck is a healthcare district? Very briefly, government agency, formed in 1947, governed by five elected officials, completely open meetings. We started as a hospital district, became healthcare districts in 94. There are 79 of us in California, about half still own their hospitals, and most of us get property taxes. I want all of you to know, how do we get our money? We're one of 22 special independent districts, we get a small piece of the 1% property tax, and being in San Mateo County, that's a nice amount of money, even if it's a small piece. We cover, our boundaries were drawn, and it's hard to see, but basically, we cover all the way from San Bruno down along the bayside through half of Foster City. We actually cover 777 houses in South San Francisco. The line was drawn in 1946, it's never changed. We cover about 220,000 lives, or a third of the county. Our history, I won't go over all these things, but I think what's critical to know, a lot of people think we still have a part in the hospital. We do. We're proud of the fact that our board negotiated that gorgeous $700 million hospital, kept it on our land, kept it a community hospital. We kept ownership on behalf of all of the residents of the land. But we got them to build the hospital at no cost to the taxpayer. We think that's a good accomplishment. Since our, we no longer have a hospital, we focus from sick care to wellness care, and that's really where our efforts have been, is community programs. And then what do you do with the land you have? It's easy to just sell it and get money, but we don't think that's a good stewardship role. So we have been spending time on how best to take care of that land for all of you. I'm going to skip over that, all of this, but I do want to say our vision, because our vision is how we live and breathe. Our vision is that every resident under our auspices can achieve their optimal health through prevention, education, and access to care, and those are chosen very specifically in that order. Our board today, I really want to take a second to talk about my board, because, you know, when you just get election at large, you know, you kind of get whoever's willing to work really hard and run for office. Our board chair is a master's in physical education, a PhD in community health. Our vice chair, Rick Navarro, is a practicing anesthesiologist. Our secretary, Helen, is a nurse. She's been critical care, cardiac rehab, endoscopy, and she takes care of privately seniors in the home. Dennis L is a land use attorney, and Frank Paliero is a construction litigator, problem litigator. So if you're going to be building things, and you're looking at all that, I think we have an excellent team of board members. I want, I hope when you walk away, and I hope this will encourage you to look at our website and learn more about us, but our goal is to be a community benefit. That's why we exist. My board members don't take, members don't take a penny of stipend, they take no benefits, they get a bag of nuts and a cup of water at every meeting. They're dedicated to making sure that we stay focused on what our role is. And I think we are a community benefit. We have a hospital at no cost, we retain the land. The way we work is in partnership and innovation, and try to get things, you know, get people gathered to see how we can come up with solutions. We are not in it to take credit. I've been told in my eleven and a half years here, that's one of the problems, Cheryl. You only get on the front page of the Daily Journal if somebody else writes a letter. You should be beating your chest and telling more people what you're doing. We don't do it for the self-gratification. We do it, how we made an impact? Are we doing what we're supposed to do? And I believe we are, that's why I'm there for 11 and a half years. We are locally focused, locally controlled. I was just sharing with this lovely lady who's next to me, I was at your Art and Wine Festival in our booth, and we were looking at our assisted living facility, and they were looking at the new gym flyer, and I kept saying, "Where do you live?" You know, and I said, "Well, I live in San Bruno." I said, "Then you better come over here and find out what the heck I'm doing. I get $6 million of your taxpayer dollars every, and nobody comes to our meetings." So, I urge you, fill something out, we want to hear from you. We meet here, half the time, and half in Burlingame, so, but it's local control. That's the critical, critical thing. We can move quickly, and we can meet our needs. I think we have very professional leadership, and our ongoing mantra is to balance what the urgent needs are today, keep an eye on the future of healthcare, and we have the expertise in our leadership to do that. May I just digress slightly? I am a retired hospital administrator and nurse, after 39 years, so we do bring that.
Can I get closer to the mic, Cheryl?
I'm sorry?
We don't want to miss anything.
Oh, I'm not going to go over these details in terms of our goal areas, I've touched on them. We still give out $2 million a year in community grants. We work on identifying gaps in services. And then we also identify some special project, projects. We take our role as a landlord and developer very seriously. In the handout I have, I actually, I sent the, my PowerPoint last week, and then put a few pictures in the next edition here, so you'll see some pictures, but 30 acres of our land is in Burlingame, 26 is where the hospital was, 1 is where the new assisted living building is, at Magnolia and Truesdale. And then we have one property in San Mateo, and that's where we put this on Rhesus Dental Health Center, and I can tell you more about that, should there be questions. And 1600 is our new assisted living and memory care facility, which I hope the licensing leaves on Friday and gives us the clearance to bring people in this month. And then that back area west of the hospital is about six acres, which we have a vision for a Peninsula Wellness community. Special funding projects, I've touched on most of them. Couple I haven't, a three-year partnership with the San Mateo Union High School District, looking at teen mental health. We just signed another agreement with Stanford to look at the K through 8 grades, and look earlier to see if we can identify issues, so that we can help address problems and get kids directed appropriately to help them transition into middle school and then into high school. The Royal Health Coalition, we're very active on, from a county perspective, to carry out their strategic plan. And as I just mentioned, we opened the Fitness and Wellness Center, and I'm excited to say we have almost 200 members in two months, and then our Peninsula Wellness Community. So, please take one of these folks, because it has all this information, but we really are committed to transparency. We want you to know what we're doing. Please don't wait until we're on the front page of the page, the paper, because there's always three sides to every story. But our board meetings, we want you to know about, sign up for our materials, and sign up for flash vote. Drop by our office, call us, we're a small group, but we really want you to know that we've been around for 70 years. We've been doing a lot, and we continue to do a lot more to address the health needs of our community. And we do try to look at everything, from the dental, where we treat one-year-olds to 101-year-olds, we're looking at our school program, we have our teen program, we have our senior programs. So we're looking at all ages and all stages of health. So with that, I thank you again for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer questions, and I hope I can leave all my paper here, and then anybody can take what they want, and then we will be here on Thursday, and I'll pick it all up.
Well, thank you, and we do have questions, I'm sure. And can we please get this presentation on the website, so that anyone interested can also?
It is posted on the website, Mayor.
I think she has a newer version.
A new version?
Yeah.
And may I just say that the only thing I changed on the newer version is I put a picture of our actual land, and I put a picture of the buildings that I was referring to, but the content is all the same.
People like pictures. Ms. Schneider?
Well, congratulations, and I read the newsletters when they come out, so thank you for everything. I have two questions about, one question about the Wellness Center. Does it include any kind of warm water therapy?
Uh, no, we would love to be able to put it there, but the facility won't allow it. Our Peninsula Wellness Community Plan, and our community hub, where we had hoped to have a gym like that, the plan so far, right now, as proposed by the developer, will have warm water therapy.
Excellent, because for people like my mom, we join primetime, but they only have a couple classes of water aerobics a week, so it's not really worth the money, but we're also finding at 91, hot water really helps with all the arthritis. So if we can get that, then I will sign her, I'll sign us both up for that. Second question, oh golly, I'm going blank.
Okay, we can come back.
Okay, I'll come back. Sorry.
It's all right. Ms. Aliva?
Thank you, Mrs. Fema. I was wondering, is there, is this all short-term livable, everybody's living their short-term? It's not, there's no such, like, the headlines of the paper today, affordable housing. What does that have to do with your project, with the Wellness Center?
Great question, it's confusing. We thought we'd be cute and name everything Peninsula Wellness, and Truesdale this, and Truesdale that. They're distinctly different projects. Our 124-unit assisted living and memory care facility that hope, we hope to open any day, is month-to-month rentals, age-restricted, and it is assisted living and memory care. The Peninsula Wellness Community is the six-plus acres that's west of the hospital, that is going to have as program to have and plan to have, although we're still evolving that plan, about 300 units of age-restricted, younger, 55, independent apartments, that are part of a complex that also has supportive services and medical services, and a community hub, will have other to-be-determined services, so that what you have, it'll have green park area, and it is incorporating the latest research on urban living situations to increase the quality of life in the later years. That's the development that, I guess I, I'll say, I'm glad that everybody's now noticing it, that folks are hoping that we can rethink the 55 independent apartments. I will add, though, that when we sent our RFP out to the developers from, from the get-go, we did ask to have at least 10% affordable units in that independent housing.
And how do people apply for this housing?
Way too early to tell right now, because we just selected a developer in the exclusive negotiating agreement phase. We had started our EIR and put that completely on hold, and now we're just, you know, we're in the nits, as you know, we're really in the early phase. We worked on the vision, and all of the time we spent was what is needed, what should be needed, where will technology be? I mean, if you can do, replace an aortic heart valve now as an outpatient procedure, what's, what's it going to be in five to eight years when it finally gets built? So we've been working closely with the hospital and looking at that. So, once we get the agreement on the lease, and what has to be included, and go a whole new round of input, I'll, probably in two years, I'll have a better answer to that question.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, the city of Millbrae requires at least 15% affordable housing, and I think Burlingame might be above us on that front. We would hopefully ask, for the benefit of the community, there are a lot of senior needs, and people cannot afford to live here. So if we can increase that number, it would be exceptionally helpful to the community as a whole, and to the mission, I think, of what the healthcare district does, and you all do wonderful work. So we appreciate all that hard work and effort. But we're all under a lot of pressure, city-wise, too, to try to make sure we can get as much affordable as we can possibly. So I would hope that, I understand the RFP went out, but if we could communicate to the developer, they, they tend to sometimes snap up to the plate when requested, so we would hope that that would happen. As a side note, I'm sure you've heard, Millbrae will be looking at, fingers crossed, a new recreation facility, restoration of a recreation facility, and we hope to work closely with the healthcare district, because our recreational goals are, I think, greatly aligned with what the healthcare district is providing, and we hope that we can work with you side by side as things progress for Millbrae's Recreation Center.
May I comment?
Yes, please.
Burlingame actually doesn't have a requirement, just for the record.
Oh, okay. My apologies.
And I...
They're always behind.
We, you know, the district is, is very open to hearing what is needed, and we will be talking about it further. The developer has been very agreeable of working with us to see what we need. I think it would be appropriate, though, to say on behalf of the board, that what we really want to make sure we do is not compromise, all of a sudden we become a housing district versus a healthcare district. And I recognize that housing, safe housing is a part of health, but we've worked for so many years on the whole campus of services and how it works together, so they really wouldn't be independent. Having said that, just because I felt like I needed to, we want it, we want to do the right thing. I don't know that our little six acres is going to solve much of the problem, but we want to do the right thing. On the rec center, I did mention early in my opening, I want to say, what have we done for you lately? And one of the things that we did do in Millbrae, for Millbrae, in addition to our healthy school support, and our, our gym where we have the members, and our Sun Rhesus Dental Center, it's in San Mateo, but we had, just last year, we had, we did over 2,000 procedures on, on almost 500 visits of Millbrae residents. So even though it's down there, it's serving your residents. And then would also want you to know that right after the fire, the district did give a $50,000 check to get, to help replace supplies and to help facilitate transition, so the children and senior services can continue. So I offer that as an example, that we hear you, and we know it, we respect the importance of a rec center to a community.
Well, and I think you also opened your doors for meeting places when we needed them, and that was very kind.
And we still do, where you're welcome. We have the Girl Scouts there just this Monday.
Yes, you have a lovely facility, so thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you in the future. And I do respect the fact that your primary goal is the healthcare here, and we are, everybody's being pushed in different directions regarding housing, so thoughtful consideration is greatly appreciated, understood. Can I, and they'll get back? Thank you.
Mr. Holliburton?
Yeah, well, thank you for all the work you do, and I also just wanted to thank you for keeping the senior fitness facility open, because that was, it serves a major need in this community, and it was something that we got a earful about here, you know, what can Millbrae do to help make sure that this happened? So, thank you very much for saving that, and look forward to continuing a strong partnership with you in the future.
Vice Mayor Lee, excuse me.
Yeah, I just can't sing your praises enough, Cheryl. You've been doing a lot of work in the community, you're very active, you're supporting the community, to make the healthcare district a very relevant agency, and a very important agency, and I think all the things you do, including, you know, providing spaces for nonprofits to meet, and also, my, dear to my heart, is supporting hepatitis B-free program, which is a silent killer, and it's causes, it's the cause of liver cancers, especially in Asians, so, and your support of that's been really invaluable. So I just, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the things you do, and your, and your board, and coming into community, and, how was that inflatable colon? That was very interesting.
Outside of fitters of all places.
Okay, thanks again.
Ms. Schneider?
I do remember, if I remember correctly, your organization...
I do remember. If I remember correctly, your organization has a number of support groups? Am I confusing you with Peninsula Hospital?
Probably Peninsula Hospital.
Okay.
We do provide classes. We've had a series of classes and what have you, but we don't have ongoing support groups.
Okay.
We do have, though, we're going to have ongoing Tai Chi and yoga classes at our Wellness Center just up on the corner.
There we go. Thank you.
Wonderful. And Tai Chi and yoga also extremely beneficial to older people as far as balance goes. Very beneficial, avoiding falls and all of that.
We had our first balance class last week, September is fall prevention. So please consider coming by if you can on the 10th and mark that December 5th, because we want to really celebrate the whole community, because we don't do it individually, we do it together. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for being at the Art and Wine Festival and all the education and outreach that you do. Greatly appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Moving on to agenda overview, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and good evening to the City Council, Tom Williams and interim city manager. So last Friday, the 21st, we had another successful Millbrae Goes to the Movies night. We had about 100 people attend. We had three food trucks. One of the food trucks, which was the custard truck, actually came back the next day and provided custard ice cream to the, to the event out at Central Park for-
Relay for Life.
Yes, thank you. Relay for Life. And so it was a great partnership with, with one of our vendors to do that. So we, we very much appreciate that. Tomorrow, on Wednesday, September 26th, the city of Millbrae will partner with Sunshare Solar to host a workshop on renewable energy products for our local households. Participants will learn about deep discounts on home solar energy generation, electric vehicles. The workshop will begin at 7:00 PM in the Millbrae Library tomorrow night. And people can also learn more about the program at www.bayareasunshares.org. I will repeat that, www.bayareasunshares.org. Also, over the weekend, last Saturday, we had Coastal Cleanup Day for 2018. We had 90 volunteers. So we appreciate everyone coming out and picking up litter throughout our various parks, trails, schools, the civic center in the downtown area. Volunteers, they all met at Central Park and picked up approximately 1.5 cubic yards of trash, 0.5 cubic yards of organics, and 96 gallons of recyclables at 14 sites throughout the city. I'd also like to just give a big thanks to our Public Works Department. They've been cleaning up the area over by the city-owned parking lot behind Peter's Cafe. And if, and if you're out there, you can see what a great job they've done. So thank you to our Public Works crew for, for jumping on that and doing a great job. You will see a difference.
Before you move on to, thank you to the Rotary, the Lions Club, St. Dunston School, Mills High School, I believe Sarah High School was also there. Mercy. Representatives from the entire community showed up for this. Many of the council members were also out. And the Millbrae Beautification Committee, it was really a public gathering. Again, what number was this? How many times have we done this?
This was the, I don't know how many times we've done it, Mayor. It's-
Many.
Many times.
And El Super Burrito for supplying the-
At least the last 10 years.
Yes, at least the last 10 years, definitely. So I just wanted to add those groups in. I'm sorry if I missed anyone. I think the Boy Scouts were there, too. It was really a wonderful gathering. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, on Sunday, October 7th, will be the 13th Annual Millbrae Japanese Cultural Festival, and it'll take place in front of the Millbrae Library. It starts from at 10:30 AM and will go to 4:30 PM, again, October 7th, Sunday. The event is hosted each year to celebrate the arts, culture, and cuisine of Japan. During the event, there will be a series of live performances that include drums, Japanese archery, martial arts, and classical Japanese dance. We are now the proud owners of the Madvac PS300.
Yay!
All right. Which is our sidewalk street sweeper. I'd like to invite Key Lim, our Public Works Director, to come up and give you a briefing, not only on the street sweeper, which is very exciting, because it's very efficient, saves a lot of time for our crew, but also he'll provide you with an update on the sewer main construction on Hillcrest through Broadway.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. Key Lim, Public Works Director. First off, I'd like to let you know that we received the sidewalk sweeper in early September, and we have been using then, using the sweeper along downtown on Broadway from Post Office to Victoria. We also used it at along the Alcamino-Furnish Road from Taylor to Victoria. We use it on Side Street between Broadway and Furnish Road, at the Library Plaza, and also at our City Hall parking lots. The sweeper is actually really amazing. It's like a giant vacuum. It sucked up all the debris on the sidewalk, and then it has a compactor within the sweeper. So it compact the trash on a two-to-one ratio, and it can hold about approximately 60 pounds of trash inside the sweeper. And it also has a 15-gallon water tank in it, where we can use to scrub off the little debris and spills such as ice creams on the sidewalk. And the diesel is powered by diesel. And with that, I'd like to show you a little two-minute video. It will show you how fast it actually walked down the street and then picked up the trash, whereas it would take us about half hour to handpick up the trash, put them in a bucket, and then dump it into a larger trash container.
Hope it comes with music.
Unfortunately, not quite there yet.
We saw this earlier today. We thought two minutes is going to be a long time, so just fascinating.
That is about 42nd. So with that, moving on to the sewer project. We, this is the fourth project this year, which is the sewer rehab sewer modernization program. We had recently completed Medron Sub Base in 1, 2, and 3, and we had recently started that Hillcrest Sub Base in 3. And we're going to be getting to downtown, as you see, two major streets in Millbrae, Hillcrest and Taylor, being somewhat closer to traffic, only open to emergency vehicle and local traffic. And in the next two weeks, we'll be slowly and slowly moving on to Broadway. And that will start in first or second week of October, and it will continue to, until sometime in November. And the work on Broadway will start at about Taylor in front of the Post Office and go all the way south to Victoria. And the contract require that those, every block has to be finished within two weeks, and two traffic on each block will be partially closed off and only allow local traffic. So there'll be some, some construction delay, and we'll put out our SMC alert on that on a weekly or even daily basis. So with that, any questions on the project or the sweeper?
Yes. Sure. Way, I know you can see inside as to being, what's being sucked up there. If we can keep some sort of a record, either just taking a picture of what's in your bin or something like that, an idea. I imagine there's still enormous number of cigarette butts. And we'll be looking to enforce the littering ordinance, as the Sheriff's Department is nodding back there. People know better. And this is not, this is a community where we want to keep things as clean as possible. So thank you. I know we had this item on call, and there was a back order. So finally, it's here and it looks great. And I know there's a five-year-old who's really excited to see it in Millbrae. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. And one last note on the, on the sewer main. We're also advertising and getting the word out to our business owners in English and in Mandarin. So we'll be able to communicate the construction progress. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring to the City Council's attention that we are aware of the maintenance issues on the rubberized surface out at Central Park. Key and his group are looking at it this week, and we will be repairing it. So I want to bring to your attention that we're on it and it will be repaired. So with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes the staff presentation, our briefing.
Council?
Mayor, just to report out from the closed session of September 11th, there was no reportable action taken.
So Mayor, if you'd like me to-
Agenda overview?
Agenda overview. So after this item, item three is approval of the meeting minutes, which we have none on the agenda this evening. Oral reports from committee and commission chairs, which we have none. Then we have public communication. Following public communication on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, we have the item to accept the 2017-2018 preliminary year-end budget report and adopt resolution amending the adopted five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2023 with minor corrections, and to roll forward incomplete projects from last fiscal year 2017-18. And secondly, to authorize purchase of vehicles and equipment included in the fiscal year 2019 capital budget and capital plan. Item number six, approval of a rental fee waiver totaling $139 for the Central Park picnic site for the Monster March event to be scheduled and held on October 13th, 2018. Item number seven is to adopt a resolution authorizing the interim city manager designated to execute a professional services agreement with CPS HR Consulting for a comprehensive classification and compensation study not to exceed the budget amount of $56,645 for the period commencing October 1st of this year through June 30th of next year. Moving on to public hearings, we, there are no public hearings on the calendar this evening. Next item, number eight, under existing business, is the Recreation Center Restoration Project Information Update. New business, starting item number nine, is to adopt the fiscal year 2018-19 Sister Cities Commission Work Plan. Item number 10 is to adopt the fiscal year 2018-19 Senior Advisory Committee Work Plan. Item 11 is a resolution approving a new records and information management program policy and retention schedule. And item number 12 is to authorize and approve a contract and scope of services for New City America for formation of a business improvement district in the central business area of downtown. Also on that, I'd like to bring to your attention, on item number 12, we have an additional handout that's in front of you at the dais. And as we make that presentation, we'll bring your attention to that handout as well. So that concludes the agenda review, Mayor.
Thank you. Question? I do have a comment on consent item five. Okay. Approval of the minutes, we have none. Oral reports, none. We'll move on to public comments. This is a time when members of the public can comment on items not currently on the agenda. These do not reflect the opinions, views of the city council. You have three minutes. Please watch the speaker slip. And we have Yo-Yo.
Good evening, council members. I am here today to address an urgent and pressing issue that not only requires your immediate attention, but also immediate action. Last week, our community was very alarmed to hear that a complaint was filed in regards to the so-called Better Millbrae Organization, as well as some of its, some of its associates. The allegations were made by the developers behind the Bart Station project, Republic Urban, as well as former Millbrae Mayor, March Colopietro. The allegations were made in no uncertain terms and were backed with clear and convincing evidence, which I believe. Better Millbrae, up until now, has presented itself as a grassroots community organization. That's taken directly from its Facebook page. It said that it relied on financial support to continue these efforts, and again, I quote, asking for $10, $15, $20 or more dollars to continue their so-called grassroots campaign to overturn the Bart Station project. However, according to this complaint and the evidence attached to it, the organization was primarily funded by an outside developer, Lawrence Louis, who donated $25,000 to the organization. This is as far from a true organic grassroots organization as you can get. And up until this point, not only the city, but our city council was deceived by Better Millbrae. I am here today to call for the revocation and reversal of Alan Wong, of Alan Wong's appointment to the Planning Commission dated the 14th of August 2018. Alan Wong served as treasurer of the Better Millbrae Organization. He deliberately hid donations from Lawrence Louis in the amount of $25,000 and likely committed a financial, a political finance violation. Someone who hides dark money and expects to be trusted to conduct a fair adjudicatory process as it pertains to Millbrae's developments cannot be seated on the Planning Commission. Millbrae residents are sick and tired of the lack of transparency, backroom deals, and quite frankly, corruption, as it extends from the city council to the Planning Commission. I urge the city council members who put Alan Wong onto the Planning Commission, Annie Aliva, Ruben Hollibur, and Wayne Lee, in light of the new information, to take the initiative to remove Alan Wong. This is not something personal against Alan Wong. However, again, someone who hid $25,000, which is very much a material amount as it pertains to someone's impartiality towards these hearings, cannot, this type of behavior cannot be accepted on one of our highest commissions. I, again, urge the council to take action as soon as possible to correct this injustice. Thank you.
Millie Kugan?
Hi. It's not what I came here to say, but I just sensed it came up. While I appreciate the mayor's support for 15% affordable housing throughout Millbrae, persistent support, I don't think we're there yet. And I hope that you, I'm not trying to address just the mayor, I wish to address the whole council. I hope that we can make that a reality as soon as possible, since, since you refer to it so often. But what I was really here to talk about is the bike and pedestrian committee discussion that I heard on the recording of the last meeting. And while I completely support continuing to have it nested within Parks and Recreation for the time being, obviously, we don't want anything to jeopardize grants going forward, as everyone here clearly understands, I do think that it makes sense to reconsider whether, as you look to a broader active transportation plan and things of that nature, to, to focus bike and pedestrian specifically within recreation. I know I considered applying for the Parks and Recreation Committee, and it seemed like a rude thing to do when I wasn't very interested in working on the parks and the sports fields and all the rest of that. And I'm mainly concerned with pedestrian access as a transportation issue. I mean, bikes and pedestrian for recreation is wonderful, too. There's a lot of synergies between those. But I think that if you really want to be, continue to be competitive for bike and pedestrian grants like that really important one for the overpass, that you need to start centering, it is a form of transportation and not merely recreation. And that you can't, you can't just tack on, using grants to tack on walkability to, if you're not putting it into every step of the planning process. And I hope to see more of that going forward. Thank you.
Mark Calvano?
Good evening, Mayor Pappin and council members. I'm Mark Calvano from Calvano Development. I'm not sure I need this, but I don't want to miss anything. So like the previous speaker, I also wish to inform, invite, and ignite. This evening, I wish to encourage the council to consider my proposal for a mixed-use project at the Millbrae Station. Specifically, I'm asking you to schedule a regular study session or even a special study session to learn more about the project and provide preliminary feedback on the project. And so we can also provide you feedback on the project. The vision for this half-million-square-foot mixed-use development features office, a retail promenade, and- features office, a retail promenade, and a three- or four-star hotel. The project is designed to bring new life to the Millbrae Station and would generate over $1.5 million a year in TOT tax alone, not to mention land lease income and other sales tax and other income. The additional tax revenue could be used to help many city services. I first submitted the project for consideration in the summer of 2016. Since that time, however, I have worked with my team and we have... Sorry. I've worked with my team to formally have the city consider the project. However, unfortunately, that has never happened. Now, more than 26 months later, my project and my team are still waiting for the opportunity to formally submit the proposal. I'm asking that this proposal be given a fair and timely consideration. And I'm confident that, as the community learns more about the project, that they will be as excited as we are about the project. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think we need to state for the record that Mr. Calvano's project also involves city property. And the city has been working to evaluate and assess the value of our own property. Thank you very much. Okay. Next speaker is Woody Mansur. I was going to try that. Thank you, Mr. Mansur.
Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Woody Mansur at 379 Nerkaway. I've lived in Millbrae for 55 years, and I'm a member of Millbrae Tomorrow, a group of Millbrae residents that formed to oppose the selling of city property to mitigate financial shortfalls back in 2004.
Need to get a little closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
It wasn't a good idea then, and it's not now. Specifically, I'm talking about the selling of Schultz Park to partially finance the new community center. I live around the perimeter of the park, and developing the park with half a dozen more houses would mean more traffic, noise, loss of trees, and privacy for existing residents who live around the park. Also, there is only one access road into and out of the park, which is too narrow for traffic. I personally would like it if the city would open the park again to the public for park use rather than for development. We all know we need the community center rebuilt, but selling the park property is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. That is my final speaker slip on public comments. Moving on to the consent calendar, we've asked that item five be pulled. We have six and seven, if there's motion. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lee, a second from Mr. Holliber. Your votes, please. Items six and seven on the consent calendar passed unanimously. Item five, which is 2018 preliminary year-end budget report and adopt resolution amending the adopted five-year capital plan for fiscal year 2019 and 20... Through 2023. I think we need to be clear on part of the funding, the recreation fund here. The staff report says the city's in negotiation with the insurance carrier and accepts settlement will cover lost revenue. We need... I'm sorry, I'm page three of four. I think we need to be very clear that we have resolved the building insurance policy. This ongoing matter involves the... And the costs of lost revenue, the ongoing costs. So it's a very distinct and separate policy, is my understanding. Is that correct?
It's all part of the same policy, but there is a three-year period of loss that the insurance company will consider for the other components, which is lost or reduced revenue resulting from the loss of the facility, property expenses, loss of personal or business property, and extra expenses such as fencing or porta-potties that we've had to use lacking in the community center. And we are in negotiations ongoing for that through the three-year period of loss.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, Mayor. This is a different bucket than the replacement... The physical replacement of the center.
Did you have a question, Vice Mayor?
No, that's... I think it... To rec... We'll ask.
Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I wasn't going to bring this up, but if I looked at this, our 1718 fiscal year was $69 million, and our new budget is 17.1 million. That seems... Or 17.1 million increase? Or did I read that incorrectly? It's on page two, second paragraph, right underneath analysis.
A significant component of that is sewer projects, sewer collection projects relating to the Bay Keepers. So we issued a bond earlier this year of about $19 million. And you heard earlier about some of the projects they're working on now, and they're just working very quickly to use those bond proceeds. So some of that was included in this year's adopted budget.
So I'm curious, and I didn't go play around on the website, to see if we've got a page on there that talks about which streets and a tentative timeline, like... And even if we have a heavy rainy winter, if that might delay work. Just something to help the public understand. I mean, this is exciting. No one liked the bond measure, but at least this way they can see where it's happening, and it's moving ahead quickly.
Councilwoman Schneider, if we were talking about the sewer project, and there is a sub-page on the city website, the Sewer Modernization Program, and there is a map in there that shows sub-basin 1, 2, and 3 in Medrung, and also Hugh Quest Basin 3.
Excellent. So the public, if they're curious, they can go right there with a fairly simple word search. What do they put?
Sewer. Sewer Modernization Program. There's a tab under Departments, and that brings up a map that shows you the location. There is no street names on the map because the maps are fairly small. We couldn't squeeze a name onto it. But it does give you a general idea of where the basin's boundaries are.
Okay. Again, just to help the public understand where their money is going, just like with the street program, since we're doing more streets than we planned. So you both were able to do Springfield. Springfield, you know? And the people on Springfield have been waiting a long time. So I think this is all going to make the public feel better if we can get a little more information on the website. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, please. I'm sorry. Mr. Holliber, did you have something?
Yeah, well, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. I did have a question on the multimodal comprehensive station area access plan. That's, again, three of four. And I'm sorry, I should have referenced that. My apologies. We have a lot of partners in this one, and Millbrae's been ready.
Yes.
My question is, which one of the cats is not being herded? And what can we do to get this going? It's increased value in, what, $50,000? That's really not... Why is there an increased value to us?
There is no increased value to all the funding partners. The total project cost remains at $400,000, and High-Speed Rail is contributing $200,000 to the project, and the airport, BART, and Caltrain each contributing $50,000 for a total of $350,000. And Millbrae is contributing $50,000 plus staff time. And to answer your other question, Mayor, what is holding up the project is the High-Speed Rail agreement because of the funding cycle had passed. So they have to move the funding into fiscal year 18 and 19, and they had to get to a board authorization to get the money reprogrammed for Millbrae. And now we are scheduling October 12th at the project kickoff date at the airport.
Very good. Hold on. One more here. You put this in here, hydrovac excavator. Now, because I had no clue what that was, I looked one up. So now you get questions about it. Can you tell me, does this one have a silencer? And also, what the water capacity is on this?
I don't know about the water capacity, but it's really large. I would say in the hundreds of gallons, probably about 500 to 1,000 gallons. And those are those big vacuum trucks that you see. We have one in the sewer division, and we bring them out when we have any type of SSO or some sort of breaks. And it has a vacuum. We dig a little hole, and then we put a hose in there. It would suck all the debris out and expose the pipe. And we had one unit for the sewer division, and we are purchasing one for water because of cross-contamination is a health regulation. We don't want to... We don't want to combine with sewer and drinking water together. We want to separate them.
We don't. But I would ask, if you are getting a new vehicle, that there are some high-end accessories now. You can get a silencer, and you can get some of the different capacity things here. Because you made me look. I had to go online here. So I would ask that whatever your new vehicle considers, that some of that's involved. Because I know these machines can be quite loud.
It is going to be quite loud, especially at night when these sort of incidents happen.
Key, you're missing my point here. The new ones have silencers, so I'm asking you to look for one with a silencer.
What if we need more money for that?
Well, you need to look at more efficiency as well.
Okay. Mayor, we will look into it.
Yeah.
I will work through the city manager and get back to you about the cause increase in that.
I'll show you the website I looked at.
Okay. Sounds good.
Mr. Holliber?
Yes. So it looks like the general...
Wait, and I'll say one thing, because when you guys got those hand dryers, they're scaring children in the library, okay? You go cheap sometimes, and it's not as productive. So I'm along those lines, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Holliber. I couldn't resist.
So glad to see that the general fund revenues came in about $1 million above what was projected. Now, is that just going into the fund balance, into the reserve? Or is it re-appropriated somewhere else?
It will go into fund balance. And so as we finish closing the books, for example, on the expense side and through our audit, which we've just finished our final audit visit, but there's a number of still transactions needed, we'll bring that back for future recommendations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Vice Mayor Lee?
I just also wanted to mention to the public that we have $1 million over... Dollars over projected. Is that correct, Deputy City Manager?
A $1 million increase in fund balance, is that the question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So what is the... So you brought that up for a reason. What is... What's the significance?
It's just a positive result. Our revenues are continuing to improve. We wanted to make you aware of that. In terms of budget for this year, I did look at it... Look at how we budgeted this year, and I don't think it'll impact yet. We'll have to watch the first six months or so as we do through a mid-year process. We've already kind of captured some of that. But we did want to share with you, it's a very positive result to have $1 million into your... Basically, your savings account into your reserves to look at for future projects.
Is that going to help with that $2 million deficit that we were looking at?
Ideally, that's an operating deficit. So ideally, you don't want to use savings for your operating deficit, but maybe some new capital programs that you might want to look at.
Okay. Great. Yeah. And also, Key, while you're looking at capital, Peninsula Clean Energy, they're doling out some grants for pilot projects, and maybe you can dip into that.
I'll notice, too, in your Exhibit A, you've got Central Park upkeep. It was pretty embarrassing to have the Relay for Life with those patches on the park equipment. Really not well thought out. There was money budgeted. It doesn't look like anything's here. But we need to make sure that, although the Recreation Center is not presently operational, that the rest of the park is still being really actively used by the community. Also, you have funding here for the El Camino Improvement Waterwise Landscaping. Can you tell us what the status is of that?
That is... We are releasing an RFP towards the end of the year to come up with a concept for the medians and also along the sites of El Camino landscaping. We are going into water-wise and drought-tolerance type of landscaping. So it'll be a couple of years of process to get through that.
It's pretty bad.
It is, and we are addressing them as fast as we can. There's a lot of weeds and dying redwood, and we will be removing some redwood trees in... Very shortly also.
I understand that we have to remove some trees. And I'll also mention that the BART property has an enormous amount of existing trees. We need to make sure those aren't willy-nilly chopped down. If the city... If they are going to be removed, we can reuse them somewhere throughout the city. The palm trees on Millbrae Avenue actually came from the hotel. So I really want to be clear about that. Those trees can be relocated somewhere in Millbrae. But two years of looking at the barren soil on El Camino Real is not reflective of what the city wants or needs. If we can find some sort of a ground covering, something, it would be helpful here. And we need to start taking better care of our dirt. So if you're covering it in some way, it does make it more absorbent to the rains that we probably will be having soon. I really would like to see us do something before a two-year period expires. And I will compliment on the master fee schedule here. That's helpful to our bottom line. And we are sadly discovering that probably could have gotten a lot more fees established prior to the developments, TOD 1 and 2. Things seem to be left it on the table. That rushing the project probably didn't help. And I see here, too, the street reconstruction and surfacing. It looks like there's still funding available there. I'm sorry, you're... It says Public Works Streets program, but then it's unfunded in upcoming years here. So I guess, as we approach the fiscal year coming forward, we need to know how much progress was made on the current budget items. And the city council, I know, made that a greater priority.
Correct.
Because of our CPI rating or what was the initial...
ECI rating is about 56. We did come to you, Mayor, a couple of months ago. We did a bid opening for a slurry seal project. We received one bid, and it came in quite a bit higher than engineers' estimate. So we rejected the single bid. And we are currently repackaging the slurry seal package. We are including more streets. And we're going to be going out to bid again first of the year with the anticipation of going to construction in spring. And we are currently finishing up a second package on roadway repair project, including what Councilwoman Schneider mentioned, including Springfield. And that will, again, going out to construction in springs, towards the late springs of 2019.
I understand things go out to bid. Sometimes they don't come out as we expect. But we have to have some sort of a greater, faster turnaround in whatever modifications need to be made. We lose six months a year sometimes from the bidding process not going the way it was anticipated. So we need to try to figure out something where we're more efficient. If money has been budgeted and it can't be... You're not getting bids, then we need to figure out that there's something wrong with our bidding system or we can be using the funding that has been designated instead of it just sitting there and nothing gets done. I don't know how you do that, but it would be greatly appreciated. Ms. Schneider?
Isn't that what you said, Ms. Lim, that the first bid didn't... It came in higher, probably because it was fewer streets or less acreage or square footage? So you're going for greater square footage to try to bring the price down per unit?
It was... We went out around late spring, early summer, and that typically is a very, very busy construction window. So we strategized. We thought that we're going to do the bidding in winter when typically, construction had slowed down. And we're going to get a head start in early spring. Hopefully, the weather cooperate, and we can go out to construction in March. And that is the hope that we have.
So that's the strategy being used, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Holliber?
While we're on this topic, for the street reconstruction and resurfacing, it says here, "Project for 2018 will be submitted for council approval in May." And we're now beyond May of 2018, so... Can you refresh my memory if that has come to us yet?
No, I think that is a typo. We did come to you just for the slurry seal, not the reconstruction. That was never the intent, because we are working as hard as we can to put the final bid document together. And we are currently in final design. And we should have the package ready in a month or a couple of months.
For resurfacing?
For the resurfacing reconstruction, yes.
Can we please fix that typo?
Yes.
And, Mr. Williams, I hope you can work with staff on us getting a little more efficient in the expenditure of designated capital improvements, please. Okay, any further questions? Item six, or this is item five, right? There we go. Votes, we have a vote by Ms. Schneider, second by Vice Mayor Lee.
Item number five passed unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on, item eight. Yeah, eight, please.
So this is a brief update on the Recreation Center Restoration Project. As we committed earlier this year, we are providing an update, the second meeting, second council meeting of each month. Just last week, your council met with the Parks and Rec Commission in a joint meeting. So there is very little to update from there, but for the benefit of the public and for your benefit, just as a review, in June, your council received an update on the conceptual design phase, a refined project estimate, and received final information on community design values. And then in your meeting last week, the Group Four led you all through a discussion and the public through a discussion of the conceptual design options, but not with the intent that one of those options would be the option, but to identify what were the likes and dislikes of each of those options for a future presentation that kind of built a hybrid desired option. And they looked with a focus on the entry, the porch and the balcony massing, how the community hall engages with the park, the exposed and concealed structure, and the materials palette. So you'll hear from them around December with another joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission. In the meantime, they'll be working on that design, that kind of hybrid design of the best of, you know, based on the community input and council and commission input, the best design to move forward.
And I think we need to have 900 people offer their opinions that they'll be working with to come up with something. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I wanted to throw a wrinkle in. I know that we are waiting for the green infrastructure plan, and green infrastructure means how are we going to handle things like stormwater? And when I had my one-on-one with the architects and the city manager and looked at the potential swale in where the community, the big meeting room is going to be in the swale, and then listening to the lessons we're already learning from the floods in the Carolinas, is if they had more retention ponds. These can be physical ponds that you can see from outside, or they can be big cisterns that are built underground. You will have seen in the news San Mateo talking about what to do with their sewage overflow. In this case, this is for water from storms. And this is an opportunity, and I know we're jumping, we're going to be planning the rec center before the green infrastructure plan comes to us. But I want us to think that if we're going to be digging land at Central Park, this is an opportunity to think about where we're going to put stormwater, should we get those heavy tropical rains or those heavy rains that are coming in. So it becomes a big retention pond, but it's a place to put the water. Otherwise, that water keeps flowing on down to Bayside Manor, or it keeps flowing down to Marina Vista or to Landing Lane. Now, Landing Lane's going to get water from the Cappuccino side, not necessarily this side, but given, and I, Public Works Director Lim, I think you pointed out, when we looked at where rainfall is coming and where we'll have overflows, it's coming down Tioga, which is semi sort of above where the community center is. So I just want to throw that out there, as we're going to be running trucks and digging up the land, that this might be the time to look at stormwater retention. And yes, it's more money, and maybe there are some grants out there. The governor just put a new grant program out for trying to prevent disasters. Maybe there's even some opportunity to apply for that grant. I know I had talked to the city manager about fire prevention and removing flammable materials, but maybe that same grant would work for a big underground cistern. And then still have the swale on top of it.
Okay. And we'll note, too, CCAG has a lot of programs that are also offering funding along those lines. I know Burlingame got some for their parking area, so if we can notify the architect that we may be able to receive some funds in that area, be a good addition to what we have going on as well. And there'll be information on the website to measure II that's out there. So factually speaking, we will provide as much factual information as we can on that. And I think that's it. If there's any further questions. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lee?
There were some questions about, from the public, they're wondering, the insurance that covered the recovery, did that also include payments for future upgrades for safety, like ADA and sprinklers and stuff like that?
So the coverage for the settlement that's been completed, which is for the replacement facility, did cover bringing it to current building code standard. So it was the building at its value at the time of the fire, but with bringing code upgrades current. So that should include that type of upgrade, yes?
Yeah, because the reason why is because they're saying, well, you know, they're giving us this $6 million. You know, you can't build much with $6 million, but why didn't they give us enough money to cover what we're proposing?
Well, believed for clarification, the building proposed, selected by the public, is really a building that will reflect a greater population, a more diverse population, and something that an increased level of population can really utilize more so. So the public, in their feedback, expressed that and the needs of the different programming. So that's, I think, where we are as we approach restoration of a recreation center. Okay. Thank you very much for the update. Moving on. Item nine is the adoption of the fiscal year 2018-2019 Sister Cities Commission Work Mr. Robert Gosschalk, former mayor, nice to see--
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Robert Gosschalk, Chairperson of the Millbrae Sister Cities Commission.
You could hold on one more second here. Do we have some TV issues? Ms. Schneider, is there something?
Councilwoman Oliva pointed out, she got a text, a couple of texts. The public right now--
Apparently AT&amp;T U-verse, which means my family at home can't see all of us up here. I think you can still probably get it by going to the YouTube channel and not going to Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. So if you go to MCTV.tv and then go to live streaming, I can't pull it up right now, but go to the YouTube channel, you should be able to find us temporarily. And--
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gosschalk.
This is the commission which has 11 members. I'd like to draw your attention to two members, Mr. Tom Doughty and Ms. Doris Morse, who've had considerable years of service on the commission, and both of them have served as chairpersons for quite a number of years each. As you know, we had a one-time, and hopefully not the last time, visit of 10 students from Millbrae Taylor Middle School to Honu Japan, our friendship city, in July of '17. We also had a visit from a member of the Mosta Malta City Council, Mr. Franz Deguara, last year, and had a very enjoyable visit with them, exchanging gifts and photographs and the like. We always have attendance and enjoy going to the Malta Day Dinner each year, as we did as well this year. As the city council knows, we brought a few of the Taylor School students last September to share with you some photos and their experiences on their trip to Honu earlier that summer. And again, we have the annual Japanese Cultural Festival on October 1st of last year, and this one, as Mr. Williams has said, will be on the 13th annual event on Sunday, October the 7th. And the mayor of Honu and his delegation will, of course, be attending. We had an annual planning session, as we do every January, to look ahead for what we want to accomplish during the year upcoming. We have a subcommittee working on some protocols, the idea being that as people may wish to travel to other cities or countries, we think that there are certain expectations that we ought to request of those persons and not simply have them go off and introduce themselves to government officials or what have you. And similarly, as people may come to visit us in an official capacity, that we have some protocols as to how to meet them and to entertain them and to conduct business with them as appropriate. Last May, as you know, we had President Marie Louise Preca, the president of Malta, who was here for three days, had a delightful series of events with her. We also, through some effort, succeeded in transferring the commission's funds out of the city's coffers and into the control, direct control and responsibility of the commission. So I won't go over the common portions of this, the advisory responsibilities, but one of the more important goals that we have is to upgrade our friendship city relationship with Honu Japan to a full Sister City Commission relationship. And it turns out that in 2013, this council approved Millbrae being a full sister city with Honu. Regrettably, the mayor of Honu finds that his much larger city council needs a little bit more education and coaxing to be able to approve a full Sister Cities Commission relationship. However, we were very fortunate and very pleased when, on July 9th of 2017, Mayor Koata and Councilmember Oliva extended the friendship city relationship indefinitely, and it won't expire at any time until such time as we can step up to a Sister City relationship. We have the visit of the mayor from Honu this October 5th, 6th, and 7th. We have a very grand public dinner for him, for them, on Saturday the 6th at the Magnolia of Millbrae. It'll be a very fine event, but we encourage people to let us know that you want to come. Please contact me, and we'll look forward to having you join us. We're also in the process of planning a trip next April to Mosta Malta, our other sister city, starting on April 19th, no, pardon me, the day after income taxes, April 16th, for about 10 days or so. We're looking for 20 or 25 people who might want to have a visit to Mosta Malta and surrounding areas. We've got a very good hotel picked out on the beach, and we have a number of excursions. We're going to meet with the new U.S. ambassador at the embassy there, and look forward to meeting again with the president of the country in her residence. We plan a one-day trip to Sicily as a side trip. And again, if you're interested in this, we'll be having an organizational meeting sometime, hopefully in October. And please contact me or a member of the commission to express your interest in that. I can't speak any Maltese, it's an extremely difficult language, but I will say arigato gozaimas.
Thank you. Is that it? Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Question on council protocol, because I'm interested in going to Malta, and I've already told former Mayor Gosschalk that I am. And they invited me to come to a Sister City meeting, but I'm not liaison or an alternate. But if you're going, how do we work that?
I-- Did you--
As long as no more than two of you attend, you're quite welcome.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? Nice job, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Our next item, item--
We do vote to approve?
Oh, excuse me, we do. Thank you. It does say action.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Item number nine passed unanimously.
Our next item, adoption of fiscal year 2018-2019 Senior Advisory Committee Work
I was hoping I'd hear a lot of audience participation. Yay!
Yeah, sorry. We missed our cue. I'm so sorry.
Mayor Papp and council members and staff. My name is Marlene McBride, and I'm representing the Senior Advisory Committee, and I'm going to show you each slide, and I'm going to read the names, because these women do a lot of work and they do a lot of things, and we don't give them enough accolades. Mary Ellen Pellegrini, Mimi Lee, Rochelle Mullen, Dorothy Louser, Diana O'Connor, Mimi Lynn, and Ann Jones as an alternate. And we have really good meetings. We meet the third Wednesday of the month, and we get a lot of input, and we also get to hear from the council and the actions that are taken. I'm going to read this, because it's too small for all of you to read it. Our 2017-2018 review, we volunteered at the 2018 Health and Wellness Fair, visited self-help for the elderly lunch program in San Mateo, and helped bring that to Millbrae on every Monday, where they meet at the Chakuti Room at 10:30. They have activities of different things that they have, and they have a very programmed lunch, and it's excellent, and it's working out very well, by the way. We provide program and supply recommendations to recreational staff, resulting in a new display case in the community center lobby to showcase the senior boutique club items. They have a wonderful time, by the way. When we have our meetings, we hear them cheering, and they just have a really good time at the boutique club. They have Marjorie and Ping-Pong Game Day, a drop-in technology help program. This is where seniors from Mills High School came over and helped us old goats learn how to use the computer, and they were so patient. Goodness. Sorry, I deviate once in a while from this. Participated in the Millbrae Recreation Center Advisory Committee meetings and provided input from senior residents. We need more input from the seniors. We're curious to know how many seniors are actually getting the senior line, I would point that out, the senior line, which is our newsletter. We really want to know how many people are reading it, because we had a fall prevention program that was listed in here for months and months, and people say, well, I didn't know about it. And we're concerned, because I signed up for that program, it's an eight-week program, and it's wonderful. And it's very, very, you know, so if we have these senior lines that are going out and we're not getting enough feedback, we need to know why, because there are a lot of things, activities listed in here, things that are coming up that are beneficial for not just the seniors but others as well. So the next slide is our 2018-2019 Work Plan Goals, and I'm going to read these so that we can see them. Task one, advisory body to the senior council. As an ongoing activity, serve as the recommending body for matters as defined in Resolution Number 1637, which gives the committee power to act as a committee. Task two, programs and fees. Annually review and make recommendations to the Park and Recreation Commission for review by the city council for parks and recreation operation, program and fees for service. Task three, Recreation Center rebuild. Gather input and represent the perspectives of senior advisory committee members and Millbrae seniors at Recreation City Advisory Committee meetings and other public meetings. And at those meetings that we go to, Ann Jones, our alternate, is a real pusher for the senior lounge and senior activities. We need that, and she does a great job. Task four, senior programming support. Provide-- Provide assistance and support to current senior programming and events. And our last one, Task Five, Senior Resources and Information. We seek out senior resources, and they're all listed in the senior line, all of the members listed that we have collected. We collect information and share with the senior community. And that's my report. Thank you very much for listening. Do I have any questions?
I'm sure you do. You do a fantastic job, so thank you so much. Ms. Schneider?
Ms. McBride, you have an alternate listed, and I haven't seen that from any of our other committees or commissions. I think that's great. How does it work?
Well, it's working very well, because we have some members that have been on there, like Mimi Lynn has been on there. She's the one that really supported a program that made money for the seniors, and she adds a lot of that. And so with a new member, Ann Jones, we need someone that has time and has the ability to get out at night and go to these meetings, and that's why she has chosen to join our committee.
I think what you might, I'm the liaison to the seat here, so I might help with that. There's usually not a complete committee in the group, so Ann becomes a voting, Ann becomes a voting member when somebody's absent.
I think that's fantastic. Is that actually written into the ordinance that we did back in 2016?
Yes.
We really have alternates, I, it's been two years, I forgot.
Yeah, it was the first, it was actually, it's not two years, it's recent, and I think it's from our new city manager, interim city manager, that came up with the idea.
Okay, because I know we have a member in the audience who suggested it for Planning Commission, and given how, the learning curve on Planning Commission, it's difficult because they have different legal responsibilities, but it helps get somebody kind of in the wings.
We have it in the advisory committee, too.
Do we? Okay. Neither of the committees, can we add that to other committees?
We didn't have enough applicants to add it, that's why.
Okay. And then my second question was, many months ago, at one of the senior luncheons, a group came, a woman came in, and she had some program that other cities use, where seniors sign up to be part of a neighborhood, and they help each other. Have you, has the Commission looked at that and decided, was it good, was it not good?
It's called the villages.
Villages, that's it.
And yes, we have looked into it. It takes a lot of volunteer time, and as far as the committee, many just don't have that time. So we have not followed it, we will go, and we've been there to some of their meetings, but at this point, we have not pursued it as far as in Millbrae.
Do you think it's a good idea?
I think it's a great idea, because they offer individuals that come in, that volunteer their time for repair work, for doctors, or for rides, but it's just very difficult to get it started. It would be better if it were with another city, and you go together on it.
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wait, no, whoa, 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 whoa. Sorry. Ms. Oliva?
I just want to say thank you to Marlene. She's an amazing chairperson, and in fact, they're not going to let her go, they just keep voting her in as chair. And I think that the Senior Advisory Committee has been champions with the engagement with the rebuild of the Community Center, so I thank you very much for all the efforts. And yes, Ann Jones has been incredible, but the whole, the whole, the whole table is engaged, and you would be very proud to hear all of their comments and how well they've attended those and have had constructive criticism all the way, all along. One other thing I just, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Ann.
Of course. The Magnolia has been really gracious as well, and continues to be gracious to the seniors with their luncheons and such, and I would just like to say thank you to them as well. And I know you guys at every meeting are always extending your gratefulness to them as well.
We give her cards, Sherri Pullman, we give her cards every so often, just to let her know and encourage her that we still like coming back there.
That's so nice. Mr. Oliver?
And on that note, we've had either perfect or near-perfect attendance from the Senior Advisory Committee on the Recreation Center Advisory Committee. I think, Marlene, I think you made it to the first six or, you had a perfect attendance record going for a while, but we've had...
Then I had a reunion that I went to.
Oh, goodness.
Well, I'm glad to see the representation there on the committee, and certainly very much valued.
Thank you very much. We enjoy it, and I think we, I think they're listening to the seniors and what our desires are. So that's nice.
Yes, we're listening to everyone in the community, we thank you for that. I do have one idea for you.
Okay.
Yeah, it may help, your newsletter goes out once a month. You may want to try to work with the Recreation Department representatives and either get a Facebook page. I know a lot of seniors use Facebook as a reminder. You don't need to be a senior to get reminders, they're very helpful to many of us. So that could be an alert that goes out to remind people about your events, because you do have spectacular events, and we really, you, your leadership in this committee is wonderful. Thank you to all of your committee members and to you in particular.
Thank you. The more communication we can have, the better.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Second, your votes, please. Yes. Yes, Marlene. There you go.
Item number 10 passed unanimously.
Hey. Item 11, Resolution Approving New Records and Information Management Program Policy and Retention Schedule. Ms. Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you this evening is the Records and Information Management Program Policy and Retention Schedule that we would like for you to review and consider adopting. I don't know about you, but on page two of the report, in the first paragraph there at the top, it says, "Our current retention schedule was adopted on October 14th in 1980." Now, I can remember back to what I was doing in 1980, and I think if you just take a quick moment to think about that, and then the leap forward as to how things have changed in our world with communication and the generating of information and how we keep it and what we do in our day-to-day jobs, it's high time that we need to update our retention schedule. And it is important that we update our retention schedule, because that will be the base that the city will use to start building on electronic document management system. We can't take the current schedule we have and put it in there, it's just not going to work for what we need it to do. But we do need, Gina, are you trying to figure out what you were doing in 1980? I'm just kidding.
No, I'm getting the item up.
Just kidding, I'm sorry.
I know what I was doing.
So it's building on, on what the electronic, electronic document management system will do for the city, and looking at the retention schedule in front of you, it is important that we maintain our documents. We have a duty and responsibility to do that, and we need to make sure that we maintain and keep them for work that we do day in and day out, and also for keeping the records per the retention schedule in the event that we need to retrieve them and review them. The document before you meets the legal requirements for the retention schedule. It has been reviewed, we are looking at the state and federal laws that impose the requirements on the management of the documents, so the schedule here does meet the legal requirements. Back in 2017, the city contracted with Kaizen InfoSource to assist in this process of the records retention update, and also with the document management. So there are two components to the project, so one of the components is in front of you tonight, the other component was released in an RFP last Friday by the city clerk to look for an electronic document management system vendor that will then come in to assist us in the next phases. So I do want to make it clear that the contract that is with Kaizen is not just $88,000 for what's in front of you today, but there is work coming in front of you as well in the form of the document management system after that. We do want to just let you know that tonight, we'd like to hear from you, your comments on anything here, if you have any questions. We did receive questions from Councilmember Schneider, I do have those here in front of you. I can just let you know what some of the items were that we discussed with, with her, and in your packet on, in attachment, too, that is the retention schedule. We looked at, and I'll just briefly go through the numbers on here, so record number four, which is on page one, which is the service issues and complaints.
Page one of the attachment, or?
Page one of the attachment, yes.
Page nine of the PDF.
Yeah. And then there's item, record number seven, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Item 10, election records regarding campaign statement files electronically and candidates not elected. Item 18, historical documents, events, memorabilia, collections, and artifacts. Item 27, legislative agendas and proclamations. Item 36, economic development programs and services. I just want to check my notes here. I believe those were the items there, and I do want to stress that when we look at the retention on all of these items, under the retention schedule, while it may look, and I'll just use the first one on page one, item four, service issues and complaints, for all departments, it says closed plus two years. So the item has to be closed, which means we get a complaint, it comes in, it could be open for five years. Once the complaint is closed, the retention will be kept for two years after that. So that's one of the items I do want to point out. So that's on all of these. So on some of these, there are some ones of term of office, like for appointment to boards, commissions, and committees, there's a term of office plus two years. So that means we keep that information while the person is appointed to that committee. Once they are off that committee, then the retention starts as two years after that. We keep it for two more years. So I just want to clarify for some of those, when, when we look at them, sometimes people say, "Oh, we're only going to keep this for four years or five years." There are some actions that we take on some of these, whether it's a close, or, you know, once someone has been done with their point, a point of term. So I do want to clarify that. The one comment also that came up under item 18, which is historical items, historical documents, is that the city would request from maybe the Historical Society to review any items prior to their being destroyed and getting input from them if they would like to maybe keep some of those items, or if there would be a longer retention on those. So with the comments that came in from Councilmember Schneider, one of the things, besides hearing from you this evening, if you have any additional comments or questions here, we'd like for you to consider to adopting the schedule as is tonight, and we will bring back to you with consideration from coming back to you, bringing the items that were called out to staff to review everything and bring back and report at a future meeting to get input from you on our comments and any proposed changes to the current that we have on here. So that's what we would like to propose this evening, if you would so like to entertain. At this time, I'm done with the presentation, but would like to open up for questions and comments from you, and I also have Helen Strick here with Kaizen. She is our consultant, and she is available for questions as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schneider, for getting your questions in early. Appreciate that. I did have questions. First off, record keeping has been a problem. I know when we were doing the park study, nobody could come up with the records from the SFPUC, who kindly is going to let us use one of their pieces of property as a dog park. So how do records like that, that come in from other agencies, especially when they involve our use of land, and I know this has been, there's been issues here with all the developments and stuff, agreements flying everywhere, I don't even know how you'd file those, but we need to come up with some way. These are very, very important records to the city of Millbrae, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Williams knows, what they did in other cities, but some way we have to retain this information.
Those are not recorded?
Now, this was, okay, for the dog park, the SFPUC met, then they sent us a letter and said, "We approve your use of our property as a dog park." I think we gave them a dollar or something, but it was a letter. So they took an official board action, and we were sent a letter. I understand it's not a real estate transaction. However, it was a letter of significance. Thankfully, the Dog Park Group held on to, so we had a copy of. But something like that comes in, it is important when another agency outside of the city gives us some authority or gives us some use of their facilities, so...
So I can, I can answer part of that if you'd like. So part of it is, when we do get letters from other agencies that do record official actions that have been taken that deal with the city, then those are records, and they could be a form of being in an agreement form or some type of permit form or something that we would keep.
Okay, so nobody kept?
No, so what, and so getting to that is, that part of the process is that all of the records need to come in, as they come into the city, they need to come into the city clerk's office for filing and making sure that they are kept. So the training also has to be with our staff as well to recognize when some of these things come in, and it's not to point any fingers that someone didn't do something, but that we need to recognize as staff that when these things come in, they are important. If they're not sure, they get funneled to the right area, which is typically to the city clerk's office. And so that is part of the process that happens behind the scenes when we adopt schedules like this. There will be a training that is associated with the retention schedule that the city clerk is working on with our consultant to make sure that employees are understanding of the process and what needs to be done. So what happened with that letter, and I can tell you, I was clerk at the time, and we looked for that letter, and at the time, I didn't even know what we were looking for, but we were looking for a needle in a haystack until you finally helped us by getting a magnet, and we were able to pull it out. And so, you know, wherever that letter came into, you know, unfortunately, it didn't land where it should, so we now take a better look at things that are coming in to say, "Do we need this?" And if we do, then we apply it and we put it into the retention, and so...
I think we should be alerted to the fact that, yes, it goes to the clerk, but it may go to more than one department.
That is correct, yes.
So if we're especially doing an electronic record, something like that should be included in parks, should also be included in land management, whatever.
Again, when we move into an electronic management system, there will be naming conventions and ways to search for these items, so that if we're looking for something, it won't be just something specific, though, it should be in the clerk's office, or it might be in parks, or it might be somewhere. So as we move along, these are processes that we will be putting in place to ensure that we have everything in order to make sure that the current policy and what you have before you is working correctly.
Okay, and then one other thing for clarification as we move forward, please, is the way the information is retained. In my day job, we get requests for information, state agencies get requests for information, and I'm curious as to, are we going to be investing in the clouds, or where that information will end up, the security of the information, as always, but sometimes you're legally required to turn over specific information. This is not my area of expertise, I just know that many times you have to respond to things.
Mayor and council members, my name's Helen Strick. One of the requirements in the RFP that went out is security. We are looking, on behalf of the city, at a cloud solution for cost efficiencies, but security is always a consideration because of privacy issues and so you can get to the information. So also, the naming conventions will help, but also it'll be full text, it'll be OCR'd. So every document going in...
What does that mean?
Optical character recognition, every document that goes into the system, you can search for that document by all the words in that document. So a lost letter should less like, be almost impossible to do. Now, I'm sure there's always a way, but that's part of the reason that we need the classification from the retention schedule. from the retention schedule, because then we put in a structure, and we put in naming conventions, and things like lost documents don't seem to happen very often.
That would be nice. And I forwarded an email to Mr. Williams regarding a code section. Were you able to communicate that? Hang on.
Okay, yes. I did look at that. Every category has a number of citations with it. And often, the citations that are not exact in someone's perspective is because there's a reference in that citation that may need a document to fulfill a requirement. We just make sure we do all of the research on all those categories every time we do a retention schedule. And anything that might pertain to it is also included, so that it's not kept too short. We want to make sure that the city complies with all the requirements out there. So, we did double-check it. We stand beside it. If the city wants to change the timeframe, that's fine. That's not a problem, as long as it's not shorter than what has been stated.
Understood. I think the reference was that it was an inappropriate code section, as it related to, what was it, an out-of-bake code section?
It was procurement and tax. And sometimes the taxes paid on things you procure may have an audit requirement, so we did leave it in there.
Further questions for this exciting event? Yes, Mrs. Vice Mayor Lee?
I understand, we have a public comment as well.
Can the public be able to pull off some of these records off, or how's that going to be handled?
So, our hope is, once the electronic document management system is up and running, then we will be able to have a public portal, where they can go, the public can go on and access the records, and view them, and look at them. I know other, there are other cities that also do this as part of their Public Records Act requests, and they also post other public records by, from others' requesters, because sometimes they may be looking for the same information as well. So, as we move ahead and move into that process, we'll have to visit how we want to structure that. But we do envision having a public portal to access the information as a start point, so that the public can go on and search the agreements, and resos, and minutes, and things like that, much easier than they are right now.
Any other questions there? Mr. Holliver, did you have one? I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so to clarify, we're not getting into the specific items at this point.
If you have specific items and questions you want to, yes, we would, I'd like to...
So, yeah, one of them was already brought up by Councilwoman Schneider. Oh-18, historical documents, that was one that I had flagged as well. I think 25 years seems a bit short to me. I think, maybe it depends on the type of record. Some of these seem less important than others, but I think certain things, like news clippings, and, you know, special events, and it's hard to categorize some of these events, but the ones that are really monumental for the city, like, you know, we hosted the president of Malta earlier this year, things like that, that, you know, you know it when you see it, should be kept longer indefinitely, I would say. The other one that I flagged was oh-83, the Public Works project files, which is currently closed, completed, plus 10 years. And my concern about that is, you know, if we have, if we're doing like a water or a sewer project, and we come in, you know, and there's some type of complication with the project, we should know about that longer than 10 years, in case we have to do another, you know, project in that area. If something ends up going over budget, or, you know, there's project delays, I think that should be retained, I don't know, maybe 20 years, but certainly longer than 10 years after the project.
The 10-year requirement is the statute of limitations in California. So, but we can take a look at that. I wanted to let you know where the 10-year came from.
Is that a minimum, or is that a...
That would be the minimum.
Okay, yeah. I just think it would be prudent to have it longer than 10 years. Thank you.
Ms. Schneider, you had another question?
Well, first to Councilman Holliver, I agree. And one of the reasons, it's the legal requirements, but also, if we did a project, and then we haven't done it again in 20 years, and we've dumped them, we can't learn from those lessons. So, we had a long discussion today that what Public Works is doing now, every time they finish something, there's a report that comes in front of us, and whether or not those reports to council at a council agenda are maintained. At least then you can go back and say, every street repair of X, Y, Z type, you can pull it up. So, but I, that's a perfect example, Ms. Lewis, of what I was trying to get to today. Sometimes we might want to go back and see those, not so much for legal purposes, but to figure out how we did it way back then, and what did we do wrong then? How can we do it better now? And then I had something to what Councilman Lee said. I've already, I want to thank staff, because already with how you do our council packets, items are individual, so that when you try to search on them on the website, they're easy to find. It used to be if you tried to find climate change, and it was discussed in a council meeting five years ago, it would pull up, and you'd have to look through hundreds of pages to find that. So, ultimately, all of this record keeping is going to make it a lot easier, even under our current system, to find things. So, that's why I didn't want anything that I brought up to slow us down, but just keep working forward on this. And the only last thing, it was, it was fun this weekend, I was trying to find the Sweet Streper schedule, and it popped right up there as search number one. It just wasn't dated. And we talked about that today, that all staff gets really good at dating their documents, so that we can tell which is the later version. But this is great, and I thank you all for all the hard work.
We do have a public comment.
I just wanted to close out by saying that in part of, and I'll come back again after this, but if you do move ahead this evening to approve, and then we come back with the items that were listed this evening in our discussion, that if none of those items, we would not be doing any disposition or disposal of any of those items that fall under those categories, until we bring the report back to council. So, we would be moving ahead with doing a destruction with all the other documents that are listed on here, but not those that were brought up this evening. Those would be coming back to you, again, for further action at a future meeting. Okay?
And do you get letters from legal counsel as to litigation holds?
We do. We do get informed through legal counsel on litigation matters, and on anything, once we're informed on any litigation matters, that really kind of puts a hold on, we're on notice that we're starting to hold those documents. So, as part of our electronic document management system, that would make it much easier in the future. We would be able to electronically, you know, put a legal hold on those documents as well. So...
And you hold those until otherwise noted?
We would be holding them until we're told to take them off hold by legal counsel.
I'm sorry, Ms. Oliva?
And as far as holding them or retaining them, is that it's the cost factor for the storage? So, could we get, like, what is the cost, I mean, what's the difference in...
Right now, we store the documents here onsite at City Hall. They're not in the most ideal location. They're pretty much located underneath where we are right now, somewhat. And that's not the best location for them, in terms of being controlled. But in the, as we move ahead, and we move forward, maybe to digitizing more of the records, we can see some benefit of having the records digitized, as opposed to having them in physical form and stuff. So, right now, we are quite full in our storage, and if we continue to keep the amount of paper we have, it will grow. And I feel in the next five years, less, maybe two to five years, we will need to research options to do off-site storage. So, part of the hope of the retention schedule is, you know, being able to review the documents we have, and be able to purge what we need to legally, which we've adopted our retention schedule, and then to see where our space needs are. And then if we can continue to use our current location, we may need to look at doing some modifications. Otherwise, we would want to explore off-site storage, or, you know, digitizing at some point in the future, to getting that, you know, in a digital format instead of paper.
Thank you.
Future issue. First public comment, Millie.
Hey, so, yeah, a couple different things. Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing this is what's about to come up. I, first of all, I just, I hope you, I couldn't really tell from reading the document whether it represented a extension or shortening of the retention policy, though that's become clear from the conversation, I guess, that we're shortening it. And I hope that you'll think hard about the optics of that, when you've got a city council candidate running on a platform of transparency. I don't believe that the city has anything to hide. I think you guys are all above board, but I do think that there's something to be thought or considered, in terms of how that looks. And then on a, though, yeah, and the thing we just heard from staff about overflowing file cabinets, I'm certainly sensitive to that. I'm not saying we should keep all this paper either. The other thing, on a more positive note, I've really enjoyed how South San Francisco and various other cities have some of their, like, really old historical minutes, right on the line in the same system as the regular one. I mean, while I fully understand that this may not be a priority for Millbrae's limited resources and everything like that, it's also been a really interesting, like, they've got, like, I've looked at, like, planning commission minutes from, like, the 20s and the 50s, and these kind of things. And it's really interesting to get, like, hyper-local about, like, how these neighborhoods have gotten to be the way that they are. I just hope you're not rushing to destroy any of that stuff. I understand that, yeah, there's things. I've been meaning to get down to City Hall and, like, ask, just like, hey, what do you have, and what can I see? Because I do understand that it's not necessarily the highest priority to get that available on the internet, the way South City does, and some of the other places. But I also hope you aren't about to destroy it either, because I'd really love to read it. Thank you.
Thank you. To be clear for the record, we're not rushing to destroy anything. The whole idea of this is to maintain the records in a legal fashion, under the regulations applied by law, knowing that in the past, the city has not kept their records to the greatest ability possible. So, there is no rush to destroy anything. We're trying to make them be more accessible and more accurate throughout here. Yo-Yo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have an opportunity to review the schedule, and I actually was talking to Ms. Lewis and Helen at the beginning of this meeting, and echoed what Ruben had said in regards to the 25-year retention. And I think maybe we can get some clarification regarding how the schedule applies to electronic document, to the actual physical original document, and then to, you know, the electronic version of it. I saw someone at this table here breathe a sigh of relief when there was something about public access put in, and I think that will reduce the burden on our staff, especially in the city clerk's office, when it comes to Public Records Act. And, yeah, I do concur with Mayor Papin, that it is a worthy cause to index these documents and make them available online. I personally, I don't know if, you know, obviously, we have an expert in the room, but personally, I think that with the cost of electronic storage dropping to, you know, infinitely almost low levels, you know, I think there could be a separate guideline when it comes to preserving the original document, and then other documents, like, that can be scanned, that can be indexed, like Councilwoman Schneider said, you know, we can learn from these documents. A lot of these documents reflect a lot of staff time that has been put in, money that's been put in, reports prepared by consultants. And I think that if, as long as these records pertain to public business, and not necessarily, for example, a campaign filing, that may not be as relevant anymore, but things that were conducted publicly, minutes of meetings from, you know, years ago, and I think 50 years down the road, we don't want to, you know, we want to be able to look back and see what happened here. Again, I'm still very hesitant when I heard about, you know, giving away things after 25 years, maybe to the Historical Society. You know, I'm sure they have a discretion as to what's of historical value, but I'd like to see, you know, more of these things preserved for future generations, who want to see how Millbrae, you know, did its business back in 2018. So, that's why I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. And we may want to look at the state archives, if they want to partner with any cities out there. The state archives is a wonderful resource, and they may actually be interested in our history, along with other cities' histories throughout. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I'd only add to that. UC Berkeley has a department that does record retention. They do the Sierra Club, they do a lot of other entities. And given our history of Mills, Mills Estates, Mills Field, the airport, that kind of jumps us up a little bit on the, we have some critical history here that would be really nice to maintain.
Mr. Holliver?
And to add to that, we can also maintain some files here in-house, either whether it's in paper copy, or online, and share them with the Historical Society as well. They don't always have to stay in one spot.
I would like some assurances, future scannings, because I have witnessed what mass agencies do when they say, we're scanning everything we have, that generally, sometimes the quality of the scans is not necessarily something we can rely on in the future.
Madam Mayor, we hope that you don't have to scan in the future.
Okay.
That it's uploaded, and that prevents those problems. Scanning would be like the old 1920s stuff, and there's only so much, if they're poorly, if they're handwritten and they're faded, but we will do everything possible to make those. We also, I recommend to the city that you follow the recommendations of the state for the trusted system. And that means there's a lot of quality that has to go into the process. So, it is not a requirement for the cities, that changed in 2018. But it is a good set of criteria that we still try to get all of our cities, we work with about 15 cities, to follow, because it does put in some of those guidelines.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay. To be clear, Ms. Lewis? We have a motion and a second, so you want to be clear as to what we're moving and seconding?
So, to be clear, you are moving and seconding to approve the schedule that is before you this evening. Staff will bring back the items that we discussed, and I can name them out for the city clerk, if you would like, so that they are captured in the minutes.
Part of the record.
Yes. So, we'll make sure that they are brought back to council at a future meeting for you to discuss, and that staff will not be disposing of any records that are in these categories until such time as after has come back to council for discussion.
Okay. Everybody comfortable? Your votes, please? Wrong button, thank you.
Item number 11 passed unanimously. Okay, next item. Item 12, authorization to approve a contract of scope services for New City America, for formation of a Business Improvement District and Central Business District. This is an item that was a priority for the city council back in May, due to come to us in October, so we're glad to see that it's on time and on schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Taking our thunder here. In May, your council did adopt, as a very high priority, the commencement of a study to determine the feasibility to establish a Business Improvement District, or BID, in the downtown or central business district in Millbrae. Business improvement districts are prescribed under the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, Streets and Highway Code, Section 366,000 through 366,71. They are lobbied to augment services provided by the city, and/or provide services not typically provided by the city, so that, for example, might involve marketing, event promotion. We'll talk a little bit more about that. So, those services depend on the needs in the area. It might include maintenance, security, signage, parking or transportation management, social services, special event coordination, tree planting, or other capital improvements, marketing and promotion, long-range visioning, and business attraction and retention. So, we are entering into phase one of this process. At staff level, we've entered into an agreement with New Business America. New City America, my apologies. We've entered into an agreement, and the first step is to connect with our business owners, explain the possible assessment districts. There's a couple of options. A community benefit district is an option, or a property-based improvement district. So, it's a matter of whether the business owners or property owners pay the assessment. We could look at their support, the feasibility, the needs that they... the needs that they identify, which helps identify the costs to them, and the timeline to achieve the goals. So you'll hear more about this from New City America next month. They'll be back here in October. They unfortunately were unavailable this evening, but they will, they will talk to you a little bit more about what next steps are. But we're going to talk a little bit about some of the local examples of these districts and how they've been used locally. So the direction will come from the property owners and the city manager's office. They'll start working with some key players, look at a steering committee to set boundaries for a potential business district area, and then work with that steering committee to develop a survey to identify those needs and the conceptual support for such a, such a district. And again, that survey will reveal the support, what level of support, what types of activities we might, this district might want to include in their assessment and potential costs. So looking at some local examples, Redwood City has a business improvement district adopted in 2014, using the Business Improvement District Law of 1994, used for sidewalk operations, signage, parking management, some program administration, corporate operations, and then some reserves. The assessment is based on several components, so linear frontage, building square footage, lot size costs, and for condos, the square footage of the condos. So the, the cost per owner may vary based on those factors. For example, the square footage of a condo is 20 cents per square foot, or a full building is just about 11 cents a square foot. That, that business improvement district has collected about $900,000 for '16, '17 as a, as a past Burlingame has currently two business improvement districts, Broadway and Burlingame Avenue. They were reestablished in 2010 after they were defunct in 2004, adopted. They are, they are used for marketing, events, beautification programs, and their revenue is a bit smaller, again, smaller level of program. So $90,000 in Burlingame, in the Burlingame Avenue District, and $30,000 in Broadway. The Burlingame Avenue District has a zone and a square footage component, so the, the levy is a bit higher in Zone 1 versus Zone 2 or 3. And again, it's a per-business plus a square footage cost. San Mateo has a much older BIA Business Improvement Assessment versus a BID. Theirs use the Improvement Area Law of 1979, and they use that for marketing to brand their downtown, public events to increase tourism, and beautification projects. Their, their schedule is much more complicated. That's been presented to each of you in front of you, but it's based on type of business, retail sales, and was recently re-proposed in 2017, '18 to, to change the assessment amount. So again, it's a zone-based component with assessments, a fixed assessment plus a, a portion based on grocery receipts or type of business. So we have, the consultant, New City America, has initiated the work program. They'll be, they'll be here to present on October 9th. They'll give you some details specific more to their program in the city. The, this first phase takes about six months for them to complete. That's the investigation, feasibility study, connecting with the local business owners, and then through the findings in that feasibility study, they'll look to formation and the next steps, which is, which takes a few months after that. And happy to take any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Aliva first.
Are these figures per month or per year?
These are annual figures.
Annual. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you for the clarification of the data. I kept trying to figure out why we were going to have a council meeting on the 19th of October, so you make me feel much better. Couple of quick questions. The, how, if we're going to have the BID process, or the, the other term for it, going forward, and we've got the downtown El Camino-specific plan coming forward, how are we planning on linking the two of them?
So the, the business improvement district on the investigative phase is to do things that the city cannot otherwise do. For example, advertising in businesses, some of the, some of the, some of the items that tax dollars cannot otherwise go to, they, so they assess themselves. So marketing campaigns, advertising campaigns, imaging, rebranding, those types of things. What the city does then with the BIDs, it helps augment some of our capital improvements, so sidewalk repair, street repair, landscaping and lighting. So that's what we'll work out, again, in Phase 1. What is it that our business owners need in conjunction with city needs, and then how does that all evolve into priorities, and then we put cost estimates to it, figure out what the assessment would be, you know, depending on per-business owner or per-property owner. 80% of the BIDs throughout the state of California, 80% of those are property-based, not business-owner-based. And so we will make a determination on what's feasible for our business owners. It's going to be very critical for us to reach out to our business community and the, and the property owners that own property within the central business district, to evolve this and kind of create our own. As you can see from these three examples, they're really kind of all over the place, and they're very specific to the needs of the business community. So that's what we're going to try to figure out and bring that back.
And is it also going to talk about, I'm trying to think when I've read about these in the past, if it's a vote of the property owners, you've got property owners who are U.S. citizens, and then you have property owners who are not, who gets to vote if you're not a U.S. citizen, but you own the property?
So, good question, and Legal can correct me, but if you're a property owner, then it's your vote. It's, it's not a municipal election or a federal election. Since this is an assessment, it's whoever the property owners. You don't have to be a registered voter to vote in the BID.
Okay. Also, during the process, when I looked at how they were going to identify stakeholders, we have at least two and potentially more city committees or commissions who feel very vested in downtown, community enhancement, and economic vitality. How, I assume that they're going to be part of the process. And the other name that never showed up in any of the documents is the Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce is very interested in this, and at least the last time I spoke with them about this, and it's been a number of months, are also interested in potentially our long-term managing this. So when I read the bios of this particular company, they both helped create them, they also helped manage them. But I don't want to forget our own chamber. And I would imagine that would include any other business associations like PCBA, the Peninsula Chinese Business Association, or anything, anybody, any other groups that we have like that. Another question, as a deliverable, are we going to, we may already have it, but I remember years ago asking for a full list of our business owners, and it was a really interesting database. It had a lot of gaps. So we're going to get a good list of who owns property, name, address, how to really contact them, as opposed to an address here, but the mail never gets transferred to where they, where they actually are?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
And then you already answered my question about sidewalks and parking, because I'm assuming when we get to see that draft plan, we're going to be talking about sideways, sidewalks, street design, et cetera. And that process will also have some dollars coming through, so we know what we're, what it's going to take to bring Broadway up to the 21st century?
Yes.
Excellent. I'm excited.
If I may, just, just real quick, if I may. So all of the stakeholder groups that you mentioned, they will be involved, deeply involved in this process.
Thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Holliver?
Yes, so I have a question about Burlingame. It mentions here that the annual revenue for Burlingame Avenue is $90,000 a year, and it was my understanding that the, the big sidewalk scaping and street scaping project that they did a couple of years ago was funded by the BID? Do we know if that's correct? Because that's, definitely seems like more than a $90,000 project that was done over there, so.
I was, actually, I agree. I was surprised by that very low amount, but this is, we have communicated with their staff. I think there was some significant augmentation by the city.
General fund?
Yeah. And, and so we'll find out exactly how that was funded, because I'm curious as well. Is it, at $90,000 a year, it would not fund that?
It wouldn't do too much. $900,000, that, you can see some.
Yeah, yes. So we'll, we'll get back to you, but I had the same, same question as well.
Yeah, we were briefed previously that the property owners on Burlingame Avenue then just barely passed, I think, by one vote as to the improvements, the structural improvements on Burlingame Avenue. The center divides, the parking, everything, that that was a huge asset investment, and that it was also funded in such a way that if the property owner put up the funding at the beginning, they would have to pay less. Now, maybe what we are seeing here is just a partial payment of the lump sum that was originally assessed and leveraged by the city of Burlingame to make the structural changes. So we need to look at something like that. My question moving forward here is that we move on a parallel track if we're analyzing both the property owners and the business owners at the same time, so that we're not wasting time, and we can see how beneficial we can be as we move forward here?
That is correct. That would be a parallel track, yes.
Okay. And I'd be also curious to know if this group, if there is any public involvement. So after working with the business owners, property owners, and getting their ideas, then does the public have an opportunity to make suggestions as to what they would see or want that might be considered? And also, I don't see here, too, in San Mateo, they did an improvement for Wi-Fi throughout their business district. It's something we should be considering in whatever we do along our business district here, because it's extremely important. YouTube started in San Mateo and had to leave because of the lack of Wi-Fi.
So we, we are working on a Wi-Fi project with the county to put Wi-Fi out here, expanding the city hall network.
Understand, just want to make sure that it's, I also am aware of new businesses that come in and have great difficulty getting a Wi-Fi hookup at this point in time, but we want to make sure that it covers our business district as well.
So Mayor, these would be part of the improvements that, as we address the needs of the local business community, and they consider assessing themselves, that that would be on the list to consider. To answer your question about public participation, I envision, and it came up earlier, the issues with El Camino and some of the other areas. What I envision is we need a master plan, landscaping plan, and improvement plan for all of our corridors. And I, I do think that the public needs to be involved with those design plans and, and exactly how we envision building that out. It, it will be part of the specific plan process that includes the El Camino corridor, but I agree, there needs to be, we can't just cut down a tree and leave it. We, we've got to have a plan to replace it, and maybe that is an interim replacement, but we need to beautify the community. And so in, in respect to the central business district, there will be community participation. We want to get out to the business owners first and determine and educate them and hear from them what their level of participation will be in this. But the other improvements, we're all working down this, this parallel track. We're not going to wait until the business improvement district is done, then wait till the specific plan is done. We're going to drive, and we're going to push, and we're going to get, we're going to get things done.
And one quick question. As we run a parallel track here, too, is it ever possible that you get buy-ins from both business owners and property owners? Maybe different elements are covered by different?
So that's, that's a great question. As you can see, in Burlingame, for example, or San Mateo, I think, they have, each of those cities, actually, all three of them do, have different levels of participation. And so, yes, if, if we get both, then it could be business owners have one assessment, property owners have another assessment. Yep.
I'm sorry, vice-mayor?
Some of the, some of these questions you've asked, you weren't at that meeting, and neither was our interim city manager, but a while ago, we had, we had those presentations on the general plan, and it was very apparent to those here in the council here that the downtown needed to be organized and had some skin in the game in order for us to really implement what we desired in a, in a general plan. So in that way, the public would be involved in what was going to happen with the downtown. But, so this BID is critical for answering a lot of the complaints and frustration that many of the citizens had in the city, which is the downtown has become stagnant, it's not growing, it's not being, it's not visited, it's, it's, it's not evolving. So in order to get the citizens of downtown, the business community, to have some skin in the game, and not just throw good money after bad from the city, is to get the downtown organized and help them become more successful. And that would also include you needing a, a champion from downtown, a business who wants to, you know, and that's how a lot of these BIDs get going, is they need somebody from the community to really champion a BID. So we have some business here, Mr. Yo-Yo Zoo, maybe your business could, could bob, and I know it's been one of your campaign issues. So anyway, so I think that this is something I'm, I'm, just want to thank the, this council for really being very, very visionary and seeing that this is an important thing that we've been working on, this not just this year, but we've been working on this for quite a few years. And it's just, and it's a very difficult thing to get the momentum to start. So I'm thinking right now, the momentum is starting to get pretty good, and I'm hoping that this will also solve. Also, the question about the parking too, so this is also part of that as well, how are we going to solve and provide the parking that's necessary to be, to make sure downtown is successful.
I want to thank, yes?
Just mention something. I represent a P-Bid, which is the NIC acronym we use, in Emeryville that runs the Emery Go Round Shuttle. It's quite successful. Those programs, when they're ultimately put together, they come back to the council like an assessment. You get an engineer's report that lays out precisely what the program's going to be. So if there's a concern in terms of public input, there will be a, you know, something to actually hold in your hands and read and, and discuss. So I just make sure that is, you know, that's, I don't know quite where in our process, but it sounds like at the very beginning of this. So looking at what the, there's, if you look at the law, there's a whole bunch of different functions that, that these BIDs can do. And so depending on what they want to do and what each particular law allows, I think, you know, I assume the consultant will come up with the right tool, and then we'll bring that back.
Okay, Tim Mark, and thank you to Mr. Williams for actually bringing in this group, having him walk the downtown area and putting together the package. Appreciate it. Ms. Aliva?
I have just three comments. One thing that I would want to see is, when they do contact all the businesses and the businesses, I'd like to know what the ratio is with owner-occupied businesses, because that may be a little bit, that may skew, may skew things comparably to, like, Burlingame or to San Mateo and Redwood City for sure. And then also, if we're going to do these, all these parallel plans, I want to think about the medians in the middle of El Camino, because if we are going to have a design plan, if we can incorporate, you know, El Camino's medians that we talked about earlier in this meeting, to have the same design of such that goes downtown. And thirdly, of course, that always gets, it's a boring topic, but it's like always what is the gripe of everybody when they go shopping, and that's the parking. So I think that that needs to be all part of this plan as well.
Okay, Ms. Schneider?
This is going to sound really dumb, but when you look at all of the really great streets that people like, they're oriented so that you're getting sun all day long. But our Broadway is like Laurel in San Carlos, which a lot of our Millbrae residents really like. We get shade, we get more shade. We're, we're, we run, for the most part, north-south, so you get different sun at different times versus Burlingame Avenue, which gets that bright sunlight on there. Sunlight puts you in a better mood, means you shop more. It's all that psycho stuff out there. So it could be that, negative, negative vibes. Actually, in grad school, we talked about negative ions out there. So it, when we're looking at this, I'm not, and then let's throw in the fact that we are windy a good percentage of the year. I used to have to tell the Sierra Club, you can't come up here and tell everybody to put outside seating, because in our windy season, sitting outside is not fun, unless it's a protected area. So I'm hoping that they're not just going to compare us, obviously, to San Diego, where the weather's very different, but look at the orientations of the streets and look at the weather conditions, too, if they're, that would be both for the specific plan as well as what comes out of here. But I know our residents, the women that I speak to, they like. to, they like Laurel, they like the feel of Laurel.
So, if I may, Mayor, just real quick.
I have a flip as well.
So, this is where the question came, how does this all fit together with the specific plan and the BID? And so, it's really the specific plan where the urban design aspects will come in. And I think what council member Oliver said, you know, we need plans, we need design, we need consistency. You know, streetlights, they need to be the same. We need consistent street trees. What are those on El Camino and Broadway? And what are those on our east-west streets? And what is that design theme that we need to, you know, have a sense of place and know that, hey, we're kind of rebranding ourselves here? And so, that will all be part of these multiple plans that we have in place and come together. I mean, the BID is really a funding mechanism. And the design aspects will come from the specific plan as well as input from the, from the business owners and the community. So, all come together.
Public comment. Yo-Yo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the public is aware, I'm very much in support of a BID, and I welcome the proposal that has been brought here today. I contacted about six or seven of the references provided for New City America. And, you know, all of them gave glowing reviews of Marco, who is the owner of this company. And I heard from Rick from Glendale, who said that he led the charge, ensured that people were dedicated to the project, and, you know, really kept everyone on track from the beginning to what they have now, which is actually a 501(c)(3). And I think the ultimate goal is to establish a vision. We're trying to sell a vision. We're not trying to do one-time things like put in an ice rink or paint an intersection. We're trying to have a, you know, a vision for what our downtown wants to be. People keep mentioning Burning Game. I think, you know, it's very possible to have that vibrant, you know, young nature that Burning Game has, all while maintaining the unique character of Millbury. I want to make sure that business owners and property owners are put first because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are going to be paying this assessment, whatever the amount is going to be. I personally support the assessment. You know, at the end of the day, it is an investment. You know, Burning Game, San Mateo, Redwood City, Palo Alto, all these places have shown the results of, you know, what happens when everyone has skin in the game. You know, when council member Lee has been, Vice Mayor Lee has been saying this for the longest time. And I truly believe that unless everyone has skin in the game, this won't work out. As the city manager mentioned, 60 to 80% of the BIDs are targeted at property owners because at the end of the day, property owners have longer-term stakes, permanent stakes in the success of their properties. Most properties here are owned by LLCs. So, I think we have to keep that in mind, that, you know, they're most concerned about their bottom line when it comes to how much they can rent it out for. Property owners will most likely pass on the assessment through triple net expenses to their tenants. So, my landlord, who lives in Sacramento, would just pass it on through our distributed costs at the end of every month, which usually includes insurance and sometimes utilities. So, I think it's, it won't be too hard to convince property owners to increase the property value while passing on the cost to their tenants. I want to make sure that, you know, going back, like I said, business owners are put first. So, before we bring in the community enhancement committees, before we bring in the public, this is really about the business improvement district. And the ultimate goal is to have a vibrant downtown that takes on a life of its own, that most of, for example, downtown Burning Game is run by a board of directors. And one of the requirements is that you must be an owner of a business in the downtown to serve on this. So, again, it's very important that we get these stakeholders together, especially the people that own businesses downtown, and, you know, take this step by step and achieve something great for Millbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm looking at all of the categories of businesses down there. A lot of our downtown is mixed use with housing. Where does the housing fit in with a BID? Or is that exempt?
Yeah, no. So, good question. And again, this is just an example of what one city does. Redwood City, actually, with the condominiums in their BID, they charge 20 cents per square foot per year. So, again, this is just, we're rolling this out. Millbury's BID could be quite different. It could be similar. But this is, this is the process that we're starting to look at what the need is and what the feasibility is. On page one of the staff report, I just put in a quote from the London School of Economics. It was a white paper they did. And it just showed, you know, it kind of explains what, I thought, very good explanation of a BID and the motivation of business owners and property owners to assess themselves. So, I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be challenging. But if we work together and we have an objective and we have a goal, I think we'll be able to achieve it.
And a vision, that everybody has the same vision.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Item number 12 passed unanimously. Okay. So, then again, we'll point out that that was a primary goal for the city council. It's glad to see it's moving along. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, that was the last agenda item. Going to council comments. Volunteers to go first, anybody? Ms. Schneider?
Okay. And Councilman Lee might want to go in. We had our fire subcommittee meeting. We'd missed one on budget, so we're trying to get back on schedule and having more frequent quarterly meetings on fire. We talked about a number of the programs that could, the fire department could be rolling out, like Get Ready. And again, thank you to the husband of Mayor Marie Chang that came up to Millbury and taught a Get Ready class in Mandarin, I believe, but how we can get some more programs to Get Ready. Coincidentally, the governor did release a grant program this month about trying to do more disaster preparedness. So, getting ahead of the game, whatever that disaster might be. So, I believe that interim city manager Williams, you've already talked to the fire department, they're already working on that. So, hopefully, we will get some grant money in and we can do some community building, but also making ourselves more resilient to the various disasters that could hit us. Mayor, I'm sorry, we still haven't had that bike sharing meeting, but I can say that staff met to talk about bike sharing and other bike programs. They met last Friday. I haven't heard the result of that. But there is, there's so much in the news every week on bike sharing and scooter sharing. San Jose had some big event last week and they didn't want electric scooters, but the electric scooters came anywhere. And then I noticed it was perfectly flat. So, we are, our staff is researching the information we need to be able to make a well-researched recommendation to the city. Emergency Services Council met last week. I'm grateful that interim city manager Williams came with me so he could kind of meet all the other cities and see how that meeting is done. They talked about the exercise that was held on September 6th and hats, congratulations and hats off to Millbury Cert. They played a big part of it, along with several other certs. But we are known for having a really good cert. So, thank you to Dino and everyone else with the Cert program. The next thing that they're talking about is a list of activities to get elected officials ready for every particular disaster. They showed us a preliminary outline of what will be a guide to help elected officials know what to do in any particular disaster. And that should be something that'll be worked on over the next three to six months. Emergency Services Council meets on a quasi-quarterly basis. Our next meeting won't be until the middle of January. They, so that, Emergency Bike Sharing Fire Service. And just to make it quick then, oh, the last thing, people of Millbury, we're still at just about 8% signed up for SMC Alert. Please go to next door, or maybe the city can send out a message, especially given that we're coming to Fire Safety Week, of how to sign up for SMC Alert. We have a little competition with the other cities. And frankly, this is where the small cities are doing so much better than we are. Portola Valley, Woodside up in the 48%, and we're down at the eights. You can set up your cell phone, your computer, you can get just emergencies that affect Millbury, or you can go to a larger geographic area. But it's a way to be told, hey, we were in a red alert fire danger for two days this week. And you would get that to your phone. And hopefully, that means you don't go have a barbecue that day or things along that line. And finally, the safety meeting results from the City of Millbury Library and myself that we put on, those should be posted shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oliva?
Oh, since our last council meeting, we've had another meeting with regards to a joint meeting with Park and Rec, which was, I think, quite successful. And that is moving along. I just hope, in fact, that we have the funds that can bring it forward. I met with the, we all had the privilege of listening to Marlene Lee McBride tonight with the seniors advisory committee, met with them. And from our meeting of Making Goals that was presented tonight. And also Relay for Life was a great event, and I really enjoyed it. I think that that group did an awesome job. And I was happy to have all of our council there to represent it as well. Been knocking on a lot of doors lately and coming across a lot of people that still have some major concerns key with the streets. And I thank you very much for your comments tonight with putting all those plans into place and knowing that, like council member Schneider said, if we can get a little bit more on the website with regards to where we're doing this work and what is coming up next, seems to be something I've been hearing a lot lately around town. And that was my two weeks. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Okay, I got a long list.
Oh, well then, Mr. Holliver, do you want to go?
Keep it short.
We'll get to yours.
See, I attended the Sister Cities Commission meeting last night. Not much to report other than what Chair and former Mayor Gotchak mentioned earlier this evening, the trip that they're planning for Mosta, for Malta, but stopping in Mosta as well in April. And with the Japanese Culture Festival coming up, we have a visit from Mayor Kawada of Hanyu. And the commission and some other folks from the community are, have put together a dinner at the Magnolia of Millbury on the evening before, which I believe is October 6th, Saturday evening, at the Magnolia of Millbury. So, please contact Mr. Gotchak or Kathleen Kamura or City Hall. I'm sure we can get you to the right person. But we would like to have a good turnout for that dinner to, you know, impress Mayor Kawada on his visit here. Once again, I'd like to echo Councilman Oliva's comments about Relay for Life. It was a great event this year, a little bit different than what they've done in the past with the North Peninsula Relay for Life. They brought in other communities and brought it back to Central Park, and it was really nice to have it back there. But looking forward to having it with the new rec center once we get that rebuilt. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lee?
Okay. At the League of Cities, I was appointed by the president of the league to be on the resolution committee. And yeah, there was nothing really happening except, you know, this council saw the resolutions, they all passed. There was some controversy from Corey Warbach from Palo Alto. He brought the fact that he thought that the resolution to insist, from Beverly Hills, insisting that, you know, the more, more local control be insisted upon. He felt that there wasn't enough inclusionary language for those who are not as fortunate. There was a lot of housing seminars and discussions about financial improvement districts, similar to a BID, except it's financial improvement opportunities for cities in large areas. I also went to the Women's Caucus meeting. And interesting enough, we were pretty, doing pretty good with three women on the council and many in staff. So, I think, you know, we set a good example. And at the executive board meeting of the Associate Bay Area Governments, ABAG, they had a discussion on Prop 6 and the impacts to our roads. And they're encouraging our public works directors to do a presentation and maybe our public works director, interim city manager can come and talk about the impacts of what would happen if we, if Prop 6 passes. Prop 6 is a measure, a proposition to repeal Prop 1, which was increasing the
Gas tax.
Gas tax. Yes, gas tax. Thank you. So, and also Steve Heminger, the longtime executive, he's retiring. So, they're in the process of
I'm going to interrupt you real quick.
Yeah.
We voted, the entire council voted to, against the Proposition 6. And we were supposed to get that on the website as to the funding that Millbury does receive and the projects. If that's not up there yet, please, we need to get that up there as to how important it is that we maintain that funding. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yeah. And they also showed a graph that shows that we, we were not meeting our, keeping up and fixing the roads before Prop, before, it was that the gas tax was passed. It's going to be worse if we're barely keeping up with the new gas tax. So, at the school board meeting, we all went to at 7:30 in the morning. Just want to mention that Mills, the San Mateo County High School District is designated at Mills High School as their number one preferred site for student, I mean, teacher housing. And let's see, at this, at the congestion management quality meeting, we talked about the, the bike pedestrian plan was presented to us, but there was, we felt that we didn't have enough time to digest it. So, we're going to, it's coming to come back to us for discussion.
Was that the regional bike pedestrian plan, the ABAG one?
The one that, yeah, the one that you guys, that went to your, your committee, I think, is coming to our committee now. So, that's what I understand.
There's a new Bay Area-wide one that's more detailed and is trying to standardize signage and terminology so that you can ride from city to city to city and it'll make sense. And I, maybe it was that one.
Yeah. We didn't get enough details to make a determination, so that's why we asked one more detail before we could weigh in on that. And then there was a carpooling grant, a million-dollar carpooling grant that just ended, and that was very successful. So, it basically was for city workers to, they got paid for a dollar for every ride they took in carpooling. And it showed that it was a tool that's really necessary, very well-used, and that most of the rides are coming from, across the bridges. So, that means that we need more bridges. The Penisaclean Energies Retreat is this Saturday, 8 o'clock to noon. So, anybody's invited. And the grand boulevard, toward the Grand Boulevard is tomorrow, 9 o'clock to noon. And you meet at Sam Stram's office. And then that's self-help for the elderly. They're doing a get out to vote campaign. So...
Last date to register?
October 22nd, I believe.
October 22nd.
Yeah. So, you're all invited to go and help. And they're going to talk about how to fill out ballots and how to register. So, you're welcome to next Monday's meeting at 11 o'clock. It's education and physical and nourishment for elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's a job fair coming up September 25th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. in San Mateo County. That was today. Oopsie. We missed that one. Commute.org actually has a call for shuttle drivers out there. They're having, they'll give free training. Shuttle drivers, as you can imagine, the competition is very intense, and their drivers are being stolen at the various stations. Somebody comes in and offers them more money. So, if anybody needs a job out there, shuttle drivers are, they, again, will provide you training. So, good luck. And we hope that that, it's a great service. Also, there is a water committee that Key will be filling us in on. There's a countywide group effort to get a county-based water group. So, all the cities are represented and we can get additional funding. So, Congresswoman Spear is spearheading that and Supervisor Pine, they're putting it all together, trying to make sure that our region is appropriately represented. So, we'll need to get a briefing on that one. Again, the Truesdale Wellness Center grand opening is October 10th. And also, out there right now, get them while they're hot, earthquake brace and bolt. The state is offering $3,000 in grants for seismic retrofitting your home. They come up with this once in a while. And now is the opportunity through, from homeowners will be eligible to register October 9th through November 13th for a grant of up to $3,000 to be used toward code-compliant seismic retrofitting of your homes.
I could use that, please.
Yeah. You've got one in your box, too. But encourage everyone to please take advantage of this. It's a great program. It's a great program. In addition to, again, compliments Relay for Life, that was really well done and we hope to have a bigger turnout next year. Okay, we have to close in memory of two people tonight. In memory of John Sang, who passed away on August 26th, who worked with his brother Jimmy Sang at Lili Restaurant. He was also MCTV's programming director, oh, and also we have, certainly, he was also MCTV's programming director, Grace Sang's uncle. Good family connections there. And just heard about this, closing in memory of Candy Fowler. She passed away, the wife of Ken Fowler. So our thoughts and prayers go out to their families and we'll close in their memory. Thank you, everyone. Drive safely and have a good evening. I didn't either. She just handed me a note. How did you hear that?
Right, so that's what was... Usually they'll set their own association because you take 3% or half of whatever the amount is.